The facts on the record and the board has to vote to allow her to do so. So I'm going to ask her a couple of questions and then I will turn the matter over to the clerk for a roll call vote to allow Ms. Moore Buffalo to participate via electronic communication. And that's pursuant to the board's policy and Virginia Freedom of Information Act. I'd also point out that as of today, Ms. Campson is no longer a member of the board. She resigned effective September 29th. So today we have five members physically present and Ms. Moore Buffalo, once she's been allowed to join the meeting, will be participating electronically. So Ms. Moore Buffalo, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Hi. My understanding is that you need to participate electronically today because of a medical condition. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm home recovering from a medical procedure.
And if you could, well, you've sort of answered the question, but if you just repeat it in a general way, where it is you're participating from?
Here in the great city of Norfolk, Virginia.
And with that, I will turn it over to the clerk to do a roll call. Ms. Moore Buffalo, you won't vote, of course. The remaining members would vote and a vote of yes or its equivalent would be to allow you to participate in today's meeting via electronic communication. Madam Clerk?
Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Now, you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Bassin?
Here.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
We done roll call?
Yes.
All right. All right, here.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Up first, well, next, we have board development and we're going to start with the Ward Five Board Seat Vacancy. We have a, you should have a packet of forms in front of you. What we have here is the, I know Ms. Bassin and some of you have contributed to this draft timeline, so we can go over that first. And this has some input from our attorney, Jack Cloud, and so... Ms. Bassin, would you like to start off with?
Sure. Well, actually, I think Mr. Cloud had prepared to make a couple, a few comments.
It might be helpful if I sort of say something briefly.
Okay, sure. Go ahead. Absolutely.
As a result of Ms. Campson's resignation, which was effective September 29th, that then triggers certain legal maneuvers that must occur. You have to temporarily have an appointed interim member to fill her seat, which was for Ward Five, and then eventually you'll have to have a special election for someone to fill the seat of Ward Five until the next general election for the small wards of the city of Norfolk, which will not be until November of 2026. There's two deadlines that immediately kick in. Within 15 days of September 29th, you have to file a petition with the circuit court requesting a special election. The standard statutory date for the special election would be the November general elections in 2024, which are the next general elections at which some of the school board seats will be elected, the super ward seats. It is possible for the school board to request a unique date for the special election. However, the available dates will be limited because they have to be fitted within the statutory arrangements. They can't be held 55 days before general or primary election. They can't be held with a primary election. They can't be held for something like 30 days after any election. And there potentially are primary elections for the upcoming year that have not been decided upon, but will take precedence over this. So that potentially, for example, the June congressional primary elections would prevent you from dates in the summer. As a practical matter, what I've been told is that you could potentially hold a special election only for this in August of '24. But you would also have to pay all the costs associated with that. Whereas if you go with the standard statutory date of November, the November elections of 2024, it would cost you nothing. So that has to be decided and we'll file your petition. Then within 45 days, you have to pick, which would be by a public vote, someone to fill the Ward Five seat on an interim basis until the special election can be held. As a practical matter, it looks like that the date you would hold that vote would be your November, already scheduled November 8th board meeting, work session. So in terms of trying to calculate a schedule for yourselves, I would say count back from that to, and figure out what you need to do to accomplish a vote on that date. And there are various practical things that I know you're already considering in terms of coming up with that schedule. Having said that, I think then the next step will be for you all to discuss and, one, give me an indication whether you are willing to see the special election held at the general November 2024 elections and begin to flesh out a schedule which may require you to hold at least one special call meeting, since you only have two meetings after this before the 45-day deadline runs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bassin, unless there's any questions of me.
Mr. Cloud, so basically our options as far as, once we have a interim board member, as far as the filling the seat permanently, we either can have a special election in August of 2024, which the board would then be responsible for paying for, and I read your email with regards to all of the fees that would be associated with that, the expenses. Or our other option is to have somebody run in, or do the election with, that coincides with the November, sorry, with the December, no, the November 2024 election.
No, that's not exactly right.
Okay.
You have to hold two elections. There's going to have to be a special election and then after that, there will be the general election, the regular general election. The special election is to elect someone to hold the seat until the general election in, for the Ward Five seat and the other five ordinary wards can be held in 2026.
Okay.
Also, that August date is not for certain.
Okay.
That was, our registrar is saying that might be a possibility, but there's multiple things that go into consideration, which we would have to tell her, yes, we're thinking about doing that, and she will then, one, do an analysis that will tell you exactly when it could occur and also tell you with an estimate, because you'd be paying people's salaries and things, how much it might cost. But it looked like as a practical matter, if you didn't want to hold the special election, which has to occur, at the general elections in November of 2024, the most, the earliest date before that, you will be able to hold it as an August, because you have elections that are getting ready to start right now and they're already working on those. Shortly after that, they will be dealing with the presidential primaries and, starting with those, I think the deadline for people to file, to participate in the presidential primaries, something like December 19th. So they have to, their office deals with all the elections, general and primary, but also deals with all of the candidates who have to file and meet requirements. They do all of those. Plus, they then after each election have to deal with finalizing the vote, giving a final decision and holding it closed. They can't do anything with the voting equipment for something like 30 or 40 days after an election.
So if we don't do the special election at said date, making sure we're meeting all the criteria, then the default would be the November 2024 election?
Correct.
Okay. And then, of course, whoever that person is, they would have to, again, run again in 2026 for that open Ward Five seat.
Correct, if they wanted to permanently hold the seat.
All right, got it.
You'll have two elections, one, a special election, and then the regular election at the regular time in 2026.
Go ahead, Mr. Clanton.
Yeah, I just want to add, that special election to fill the remainder of the term. I think that's what's kind of missing there.
Right.
That's going to fill the remainder of the term and then the new term is when those five wards are up. Madam Chair, I see that we've got a draft schedule that's in front of us. It pretty much covers the majority of the things that we need to do, including what may potentially be a special call meeting to do the interviews. And I personally don't think that we should be using taxpayer dollars that should go to public schools to do a special election in August, that we should just default to the November election, which we, what we've done in the past, and that we, we've got a pretty good outline here. I saw there were some questions that we used in the last one there. I think we've got a good template. I don't have any objections to what's been presented here. There might be some tweaking that we might do, but I'm good with what we have in front of us. And as far as my personal opinion is, November, special election of 2024, so that we're not incurring additional costs, so that'd be with the regular election, to fill the remainder of the term, and then there's a whole new cycle outside of that. But I'm good with this.
Okay. Any questions or reactions to Mr. Clanton's comments?
Just have, based upon the timeline, just one point of clarification. So our November work session is showing on the calendar as November 8th, the second Wednesday, where normally would be November 1st, the first Wednesday. Is there, can you explain that date why it's not November 1st? Because as I was looking at the scheduling and some of the comments, where we're talking about whether or not we're going to have, you know, what we're going to have done by certain dates, I just wanted some clarity around that switch of the work session being on the second Wednesday versus the first Wednesday.
I don't have the calendar in front of me. Ms. Tanner, do you have the calendar, the meeting calendar?
I have the calendar. I can pull it up.
I know, well, just on Board Docs, where it just shows the list of our schedule of board meetings, I think it shows the 8th then also.
I have some vague memory, but I'm not the one to tell you that supposedly there was some conflict that prevented the work session being on the normal date and prevented, well, the holidays would prevent the business meeting being on the normal.
But that's for the business meeting.
That's for the business meeting?
That was for the business meeting.
Yeah. But I'm not sure about the, here's the calendar. Here's...
It's up here on the screen from Board Docs.
Well, there was that, but I know Dr. Martin had distributed a draft calendar, I think in the spring, or just before this, before our July retreat, I believe it was. And I think there was initially a conflict that perhaps might have conflicted with a superintendent's conference, I believe, maybe VAS, that might have seen, might have been thought to overlap initially, and I don't know if that was still the case, that's still the case now. But I think when Dr. Martin had asked for feedback, I think a couple of us, including Dr. Birdsong, had provided feedback and that's just, that's just what my notes had shown, but I don't know that we, that we finalized a calendar. But I just went off for this timeline purpose. I just went off on what was on our calendar dates on Board Docs, but as for the reason, that's just what my memory, I felt like, I feel like it may be conflicted with something for Dr. Birdsong. But I could be wrong.
Yeah. So I do believe that initially that was the discussion, and I also know there was a discussion about the VSBA's conference and board members wanting to attend that.
Right.
And then an attempt to have meetings at least two weeks apart, which ended up in the November work session and business meeting being proposed on the dates listed here.
Okay.
Okay. Well, to that point then, if we can, if we're able to go back, because I understand the business meeting will be November 29th, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And so if the work session can go back on its regular day of the 1st, then at least as we are finalizing the schedule of when we're able to complete interviews, hold public comment, if we need to have a special meeting, then it would seem to me the 8th would be the day, if the schedule requires for a special meeting, if we go back to our regular schedule of the work session on the 1st.
Yeah, that's true. We could, we could swap the two and...
When you say swap, swap which?
Swap, I'm sorry. Do the work session on November 1st, then November 8th have a special call meeting where we could still do the, sorry, so let me go back. Do, have, hold a work session on November 1st. At the end of that work session, we could also hold a public comment period where individuals could comment on, you know, individuals they'd like to, either, you know, regarding the interviewees or the candidates. We still have the, interview the candidates on the dates that are specified here, but we could have the public comment period on the 1st. And then still continue on November 8th, have a special call meeting to have, you know, final discussion and vote on, on the candidate.
With that one, Ms. Bassin, we have to determine if we're going to do October 30th or the 1st, because it's, they've got two dates down for interview.
Well, I have that period down. We can decide whether we want to do, depending on the number of candidates, we could say we're going to do two-hour or three-hour afternoons. We can have a whole day. You know, I just put that, I just blocked that time period off for now, for our discussion purposes today, just so we can talk about that.
It's good to talk this out. Yeah. But I did like having the fact that if we needed to do interviews, we could have November 1st as that date, and then we have the work session that following week to, to kind of, anything else that we needed to kind of, to flush out, because that's the day that we need to vote, because we can't vote any later than that, because then we would go past our 45-day limit.
I have a question about that. Actually, what happens if we did go past that limit?
The circuit court judges would take it over and they would choose someone.
Like on day 46?
Potentially, yes. Legally, they could, as soon as you go over, they have the legal authority to step in.
Okay.
But just for clarity, so you say on the 1st, we would do interviews or anything that needs to be done?
Interviews, yep.
And so then when we, when would we do the public hearing?
We can talk about that. We can figure out what day, now, the objective of the public hearing is to receive feedback from the public on the candidates that we have interviewed or just the process, or that, like, those who have put their name in the hat? That's my question actually for you, Mr. Cloud.
It can be both. I mean, it depends. I think it depends on us.
Could you repeat that?
The, the public hearing, would that be something that we have to hold once we identify interviewees, or is that, or is that something just to open it up to the public for whomever they want to?
You could hold it at any point. I mean, it might be, it's not legally required, but I would say at least hold it after you winnow down
Yeah.
the number that you're going to interview, because I'm assuming you'll get more applications than, than you would actually proceed to interview.
So in agenda planning, we talked about this, and what I was thinking was we would have public comment during our business meeting on the 12th and then on the 8th.
On the 12th?
On the 12th.
You mean 18th.
12th of what?
It's October, right?
You mean 18th.
I'm sorry.
18th of October. Oh, just a public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at November, because I flashed ahead.
So just a public comment at our business meeting for this month?
Instead of doing anything separate or extra, we would have it at our meetings, yeah.
Okay.
But I would say...
And also, can I just finish for a second? Sorry. And also, we would have the, there's the email that we can, the public can email the clerk, and then there, what we did last time was there was a, an actual link portal that they could submit comments through the, because it's going to be advertised on our website and they can submit comments that way. So those are the three ways we would be...
I'm okay.
I hear that, but I guess my piece of that is when does the board, if we're doing the public comment on the 18th, which is the date that we've got to make sure we take a vote?
No, no, no. We don't have to take a vote that day. This is, that's October. We have to take a vote by November the 8th.
Got it. So then we would come back at a later time after November 8th?
No, November 8th.
Okay, when is the board, board meeting in October is the 29th, right? In, no, that's November.
That's November.
October 29th.
October 18th is the board meeting. Is our business meeting for this month.
If the purpose of the public hearing is to give us the opportunity to hear feedback from the public on individuals that we interviewed, then on, we have to decide who we're going to interview, we have to conduct the interview, we have to have the public hearing, and then we vote.
And we have to have the time to receive applications. So we have a lot of, there's a lot of steps that have to take place that cannot, I don't see how it's feasibly going to occur before October 18th.
Well, right.
So to have public comment October 18th doesn't seem possible to me.
I want to be sure, I want to get this point across. On the 18th, you do not, you can't confuse the public comment period set for the 18th, where people can talk about other things
Right.
and the public hearing, which would be separate on this.
Right, right.
And that would be advertised ahead of time
Yeah.
and there would be a period of time just for people to come and talk about the choice of Ward Five.
I would say we do it on November 1st.
So for clarity, we would, we would say this, this next agenda item is on candidates only and the other one's open for a comment, like public comment.
And we would do a special advertisement for the public here.
Right. Today, Wednesday is my only...
Okay. So let's, let's just be clear. So on the, we're going to put something out, we're going to ask for applications by the 18th, we're going to announce who the individuals are that we're interviewing, we will interview them on the 1st, we'll have a public hearing also on the 1st, and then we'll take a vote on the 8th. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, that's basically...
Yeah. Where are you saying that we're going to have applications by the 18th? We are going to have all the applications by the 18th.
October 18th. That's what you have.
Oh, okay. I'm just talking about, the deadline is not the 18th.
Deadline actually closes on the 13th.
We, the board members will receive applica, will have applications to review on October 18th.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
We will have those in hand.
So I, so I had done a draft, one that I sent out too, and I had the application deadline on October 17th. This has, Tanya's version has it on the 13th, right?
I don't think I got that.
I mean, the, the point is, is that we have, prior to the 18th, we would have received the applications, had time to review them, so during our close session on the 18th, we can do our work.
That's correct.
Right.
Yep. Can we just add in here, so just for clarity, we'll leave out here, so the date that we'll receive the applications from the clerk?
Right. That's why I was giving enough lead time here, to, lead time to...
That we're going to discuss on the 18th, and what's the date that we're going to receive from the clerk? There's a deadline at all.
So, so if the deadline is, that's, so the thinking was that they, the individuals have a week to complete applications. So we announce and post on Friday, October 6th, and we have to, before we leave here today, the one thing we have to talk about is what is our application packet going to look like? Last time, we did an essay, which I personally am not in support of. I think it should include a question, but I think that we've asked more of our CAC and GAC and our advisory council members than we did, you know, of our, our board member candidates last time. And I think we should get a little more information from our candidate about, you know, what they've participated in. And I have, like, two drafts that we can look at that are just quick, brief, you know, they should say why they want to be on the Norfolk School Board, but they should also indicate, like, what their other, you know, a little bit more, including their, their CV or their resume.
So on the topic, essay topic for everyone's benefit, it was, "I'm the best candidate to serve on the Norfolk Public School Board because..." And I remember when we chose this, it was because we didn't want to be overly prescriptive.
Right. So we could still have, you know, why do you want to serve at the Norfolk School Board, but just a quick other background, which we could use, you know, what we ask our advisory candidates to do, you know, like what other organizations...
Well, shouldn't we just ask them to submit a resume with it?
Yeah, they're going to submit a resume with it, but they could, I mean, that's just my personal thinking.
No, and I see what you, what you're asking.
Like Albemarle, like I looked at a couple of districts, because unfortunately, we've had districts around us that have had interim candidates, and I looked at their applications and they've had brief, but, you know, other questions that they've included with their application. And I know Tiffany, you might have a good example with Newport News, which I tried to find, but I couldn't find their draft. They had, because it was closed, it wasn't up on their website, but Albemarle has one that's brief.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you can share Newport News's application, but I think we could quickly put one together and post that by Friday, but still...
App...
Go ahead.
Absolutely, Tanya. They had an electronic, a whole webpage dedicated to appointing a school board member, electronic application, most submitted also a resume. They did not have a, didn't require an essay. They were, interviewed the top three candidates, had a public hearing, and like Mr. Cloud said, shared with that, made it public who those candidates were. Actually, all the candidates who have submitted their names was provided to the public. Three top candidates were selected, interviewed, and then someone was selected and announced.
Yeah.
It's pretty much that, that simple.
Yeah, so maybe we could do something similar, something similar to that, actually model that, and possibly have something ready by Friday. Do you think that's possible for us to do?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the timeline, yeah, we could be ready by Friday
As far as the timeline?
because a lot of it's already done.
Yeah? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
Well, yeah, that's what I want to prevent.
Yeah. I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Because that's why I feel we may be...
Right. Well, I mean, that's really similar to what we did before. I don't, I don't know.
And the other thing I was going to add in that one, what's different is that the board doesn't interview the GAC and CAC members.
No, right.
And so I think for us, the additional comments and information for us happens during the interview process. So I don't think that we necessarily do it so much on the front end. Why do you want to serve? Give us your experience with a CV. And we ask the questions that we've already got here to get the responses and to see what those responses are. My, my other challenge with that one, and I know that we want to say we're trying to ensure as a board we have input, is that once we leave out of here today, you know, we now have this dialogue and now we're, want this application to be up and running by Thursday, I guess we go back and forth through email on that one, but we want to, we don't want a meeting. But I think that if we keep it simple
Yeah.
send it out there, and on the interview questions, maybe we kind of fine-tune some things there, I think we'll get the responses that we want.
Definitely. Definitely. I, I'm not disagreeing with any of that. I just think we could get more, get more information, that's all, beyond just having them write an essay.
Like, like what? I mean, if, like an example of like what?
I just personally didn't like, I just, I personally didn't like the essay piece, that's all.
I mean, maybe not it's just an essay, but I'm just like, what additional information would we want, though?
Well, that was just my, I think it's a little more structured, it is all.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more objective.
But campaigning is that, like, why are you the best candidate and you step and we do this all the time?
But I mean, they still have to say that. They still have to express themselves and they'll have to express themselves in their interview too, but, you know, it's...
Go ahead, Rodney.
So do we, do we have two people that can work on this, get this done, get it through the administrative review and legal review and clerk development so we can get this out by Friday?
Yeah, I'll work with Ms. Tanner on that.
I mean, two people. I was going to nominate Ms. Bassin and Ms. Buffalo, because she's not in the room.
So, I mean, I've already, I mean, that's, that's fine too. I've already started with Ms. Tanner, but that's okay.
Started on, on which piece?
Yesterday, we, we started discussing, just making sure that... Yesterday, we, we started discussing, just making sure that the online piece was there, the, you know, public notices, things like that.
Yeah, that's just, I'm just meaning the, the part that the board needs to take care of. If we're gonna, whatever it is that we're gonna do in an application, whatever, making sure that we're clear, so.
We're gonna do that right now. That's what the discussion's for.
That's what I'm trying to urge us not to. I'm trying to urge us to move on and have.
Let's, let's at least go over what we have in front of us to get a general sense of if there's anything that's standing out that's terrible, like, terrible. So, um, the, uh, so here, we have the app, the, is everyone, everyone's okay with this timeline?
Yeah, I expressed, I was good with it.
If we could just say that the interview is gonna take place on November first and the public hearing will take place on the first, then I'm hap, I'm happy with it then.
Say that again.
Interview November first?
The interviews will be on November first and the public hearing will be on November first, which will be after the interviews are conducted.
Huh?
Well, wait a minute. So you want to do interviews? Last year we, or last time we did the top three, which I think we should stick with.
Yep.
And then you want them to leave and then have public comment?
Yep.
On the same day.
Yep.
Oh, well.
I mean, I, I don't. Last time I don't, I don't remember. Did we have people coming to watch?
We did public comment and voted on the same day. I went back and looked to see what.
I, I think it is good to have the public comment after we've done the interviews. Honestly, it, it's, I, I just don't wanna bring on too many more additional times.
Right.
Well, either way, I'm fine. I just know that November first, I have time for maybe the interviews, but that's student night at the opera, so I'll be gone after six o'clock. Student night at the opera, I gotta perform that night, so I'm going after six.
Well, you can come back and watch it on TV.
I typically do if I have to leave early.
I mean, public comment, so.
November first.
But we could still, we could still push the interviews to earlier in the day and then hold the public hearing.
Yeah.
What do you know about?
I was just letting everybody know.
We could still do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm good, November first.
During it noon.
Interviews.
And then public comment.
And then public comment?
And then we'll have public comment again on the eighth.
So just to be clear, the, that'll be on the first?
No, that's when we vote.
If it were to be on the eighteenth, then Ms., uh, your clerk will have to act today or tomorrow.
Yeah, cause she's gotta put out a, um, a hearing.
It's gonna be on the first?
Oh, um. I see what you're saying. So actually, what we would do on the eighteenth at the business meeting is we would have, like we spoke about before, two separate public comments.
No, if the public hearing is gonna be on the eighteenth, the advertisement will have to be done immediately.
Yeah.
In other words, tomorrow, I guess.
We're, we're not gonna do public.
Clerk needs to know that for certain.
We're not gonna do public hearing on the eighteenth.
Okay.
We're not gonna do public comment on the eighteenth.
Why not?
On the eighteenth, we have the applications that the board is going to review.
And have their.
And then the board is going to narrow down who it is that we're going to interview. We're then going to announce to the public who it is that we're going to interview. So the public already knows whenever we have the public hearing, who it is that we are interviewing. And what I thought I recently heard was that on the first, we would start with doing the interviews and then we would close on the first with public hearing or comments from the public. And then on the eighth, we would make our selection and vote.
Right, but what I, why I would like, I, I was thinking that we have two opportunities for public comment because on the eighteenth, people could come up and, you know, maybe candidates wanna speak, but also people could come up and say what they're looking for in award five candidate, to give two opportunities.
That can be done, but you have to advertise.
Right, we have to do that today.
But then that wouldn't be a public hearing.
No, I'm not saying it's, I called it a public comment.
Okay.
And it would be separate from the agenda, non-agenda items, but it would be during our business meeting. Just so we could give another opportunity, cause you know, people will say, well, I couldn't make it on the first, da-da. So we have the, the two opportunities, one before and one aft, after we interview, plus the, um, online portal, plus email, um, the, 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 uh, board email, plus they could email Karen directly and she could send it to us. So I'm just trying to make sure that we cover all of our bases as far as community involvement.
That's, okay, it was just the hear, the calling it a hearing.
I was.
Cause it's a whole nother legal thing.
Okay, okay, that's, yeah, so a public comment, okay, that's, that's fine to me.
Still subject to three minutes.
Yes, yes, just like normal, yeah, our public speaking, so, yeah.
So may I summarize, just to make sure we're on the same page with all of you? So October the sixth, we will announce and post on October sixth for the award five seat. And then, um, the application period will be October the sixth through the eighteenth, through October eighteenth. And then on October eighteenth, um, we will provide public comment.
Deadline is the thirteenth for the applications to be received.
It is the thirteenth, it's not the eighteenth, okay.
And I like that we have a timeline here too, cause that was an issue last time.
Then October eighteenth, public comment during the business meeting. And then on November first, you will interview candidates and have a public hearing afterwards. And then on the eighth, the board will make the selection, that's November eighth, make the selection and vote.
Right. All right.
Got it.
So we just need to fill in the times of the meetings.
Yes.
Which some committee can work on and take care of all of that and let us know.
Uh, I've.
Well, I feel like that could be right with agenda.
Planner.
Planning.
That's already happened, that happened yesterday.
Um, but I, I'll work with, I'll work on that with everyone, okay?
So, here's the one that we're missing. I knew I got to go. So when do we swear the in, swear the in?
I know, I was thinking that too. So, um, I mean, but that doesn't, that's not legally, well, it is kinda right, but like.
They can go and get it.
You would have to work with the.
It's not within the forty-five days. We wanted to get through the first forty-five days. What's that?
You would have to work with the circuit court clerk.
Right.
The vote has to occur within the forty-five days, not the swearing in, but of course, they cannot function as a school board member until.
So we do.
It's to be November fourteenth, no. Okay, so I have that written down.
On November fourteenth, so, yeah, whatever.
Which I think we'll do.
So that piece, I'm just reiterating, uh, Dr. Martin and Mrs. Moore Buffalo will take care of the timing.
Yeah, we'll do that. And, and again, we can do a private swearing in and then the public swearing in at our meeting.
Not, not necessarily a swearing in piece, I'm talking about the timing of the, the meeting. You know, the interviews, I mean, you're gonna work with, um, Ms. Tanner to set all that up, okay?
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, the, can we start with the candidate interview questions that we selected last time? And then use this re, as a backup if there's other questions or anything?
So.
Just real quick.
Madam Chair, if we, if I, if I may, for my colleagues here, um, we're now at four thirty-eight. Um, we have a lot of things that we need to do. I agree with Mr. Jordan in the respect that if we could kick this back to committee, um, and allow two members, um, even, you know, whoever, decide on that to look at that type of stuff and send that back. Um, and if we could really kinda put some parameters on time so we can make sure we get through all these things, that we got a hefty agenda. But we almost spent forty minutes. And to go through questions is something I think that we could probably do through email.
So this is, I was just gonna say, this is what it will do. Um, each person, you know, look at these, kind of jog your memory of what we all, was submitted before, so these came from many members in this room, everyone. Um, and then kinda select, what do you wanna ask? And then we'll have to go, you know, over that and make sure that we're not replicating questions. And, um, that we need to have this done, the questionnaire. Okay. By the, by the eighteenth? Applications, yeah, we'll have it done by the eighteenth. That's when we're selecting the candidates anyways.
The interview.
Oh, the interview, yeah.
Your protocol.
Yeah.
So. Okay. And then next we have, so thank you, everyone. Good discussion. I'm gonna get back to my agenda. I'm already November, I can't remember.
We're on school board goals, September fourth, okay.
So up next we have, um, student excellence, we have continuing the drive NPS strategic plan.
Review board goals and indicators of success.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I always go ahead. I need to get my eyes checked, by the way. Okay, um, we have review of, uh, board goals and indicators of success. So, would you like to take the floor, please?
Yeah, so just, just as a recap and what we're doing today is a, is a good opportunity for us to, to recap that part of what we've agreed to do is establish, uh, board goals, which we adopted at our last meeting. So we have, uh, five-year, whatever, whatever the, I'm just gonna say five-year, that might not be exact, but we have five years' goals, the board sets the board goals. And then, uh, superintendent administration then sets interim goals or indicators of success as to, uh, how, uh, we will achieve those. And so we, at our, at our last meeting, the last time we discussed it, we didn't get an opportunity to review and, and give, uh, Dr. Burzong the opportunity to walk us through the, um, the interim goals. There's a, uh, onboard docs. There's a document that has the title superintendent, school board and superintendents evaluation goals. But just to be, kinda get, get our language straight, so we adopted the five goals. You'll see on that chart, goals one, two, three, four, five. Then, uh, Dr. Burzong has provided us with interim goals, which she'll get an opportunity shortly to kinda walk us through. And part of us is to understand, uh, how the interim goals will, uh, lead towards the accomplishment of the, of the board goals. And then those interim goals become part of the, what we are in part evaluating the superintendent on. But it also serves as the basis for the, uh, items that we will be monitoring. Cause also on, on board docs, um, if you look at board docs under three point zero two, there's a draft monitoring calendar. But that draft monitoring calendar would actually spell out, uh, the goal, the interim goal, and by month, when we would be monitoring or having the discussion around the particular interim goal. So we would need a little more detail on, uh, on, on that chart. But I just wanted to say we can do this together because really that school board monitoring, goal monitoring calendar ties with the board goals and the interim goals. Anyone have any questions or concerns, any clarity around that? So then what, what we will, what we can do now is, uh, again, the idea is, as we move forward, whether it's at a work session or a business meeting or workshop, whenever it is that the calendar indicates, these are, these are the items that we are prioritizing. It's not to say that there's not other information that we will receive. So for example, under student excellence, there's a whole lot of information, uh, in a very large PowerPoint, which we can receive as information, but what we really are trying to get to is the board drilling down and being able to have an indicator of, or indication of how we are performing throughout the year towards accomplishing the interim goals that have been laid out. So it allows us to hear from the superintendent, how we're progressing, what's going well. There may be some needs that may come up that would require some shifting. But ultimately, our evaluation of ourselves, our evaluation of superintendent, our budget process, you know, our, our primary focus will be centered around these goals and these interim, interim measures. And what we are striving for is that we are then spending at least fifty percent of our time, our meeting time, on focus on these student outcomes. So like Mr. Clanton just mentioned, like, we just spent forty minutes on, uh, a, uh, super, a, uh, board replacement process. So what we wanna try to move towards is that we're spending more of our times focused on the student outcomes and the goals that we've set and allow eventually to get to the point where, we're not spending as much time on superintendent work and operational matters.
And in all fairness, we did have to allow Ms. Buffalo to come in and go through that legal process as well.
We spent thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's just, it's not the, it's, it's the, it's the, go, it's the principle that counts. And so, uh, there's always gonna be things that we know we have to build in. But with that, if everybody is understanding that, then I like to turn things over to Dr. Burzong and she can walk us through, what, um, what's been described on the, as the interim goals. And then after we finish that, I think we can go back and have a conversation around what our progress monitoring reports look like. Cause you all always recall, we had talked about trying to get them to a sixth grade level, trying to have charts and something that we could focus and, and avoid having, you know, lots of data and lots of information that doesn't give us the, the opportunity to really focus on how we're progressing, uh, throughout this, uh, throughout this cycle towards movement of those interim goals. Dr. Burzong, you, you okay?
Uh, yeah, I feel like we've done this before, but.
Well, we did, we didn't, we didn't, we did it before, but we never finished it because if you recall, we had the draft goals. Uh, Ms. Bassin and I met with you and Dr. Poe, we worked on the goals and then we've received this document, but then because of time, we never went through it.
But just goal four, right? I thought, I, I feel like we've gone through.
We went through goal one, but we didn't do goal two through five. That was, that was probably why you felt like, and goal one was like a lot. But maybe that's why it felt like, maybe.
I don't know, I mean, maybe. Just so we can be on all the same page, can you just walk us through it? And if we get through goal one quickly, we can just get through it quickly.
That's what I was just gonna ask. I mean, were there any questions or any, any reservations or any of this stuff? Cause we've all had this information.
Yeah, but the, the, the point is, is I think it's important for us. Exactly. What we, what we want to be at is that the board is clear on the goals, superintendent is clear on the interim goals, the board is clear on the interim goals, and so having the discussion is a, is a value. And I think we need to.
Well, are there any questions to start us off?
Well, so again, you go straight to the question, but we haven't had the presentation.
No, I'm, I was just trying to ask them.
Because I'd like to target it. If we're, if we're gonna be concerned about time, then I'd like to target.
Well, my, my point about time is, is that, so this is my concern, cause this is what I think we do. So like, we will spend, we'll spend time on the operational pieces. Then when it's time to focus on the goals and the outcomes, we then, we then try to narrow, narrow the focus and then we'll come back and we'll spend a lot more time talking about operational matters. So the goal is to get us, at least that's the commitment that we've made, that we want to be student outcome focused. So if that's the case, then I have no idea what, uh, each of you thinks about where we are. And what our pattern has been is we don't have that conversation and then we find ourselves later thinking different things. So this is part of trying to make sure that we're on the same page. But if you all wanna skip goal one, I'm fine with that. But, uh, but I do think we need to.
Start over, just to make sure.
Thank you.
Again, okay, so, um, not to go over the process again, the go, the board and myself, our governance team has agreed upon five goals that we will focus on for the school year. And after the goals were developed, my team and I went back to develop interim measures. What are the things that we need to look at throughout the school year to monitor our progress towards meeting the five goals that we established? So the first goal was one hundred percent of schools will be accredited by the twenty-seven, twenty-eight accreditation year. The percentage of schools meeting accreditation requirements will increase from fifty-seven point one percent during accreditation year twenty-three to sixty-five point eight percent during accreditation year twenty-five. So what I have provided to you is information related to the percent, the percentage of schools that are accredited. And so that's the first chart that you see. And again, the goal is to meet one hundred percent by the end of twenty-seven, twenty-eight. That's twenty, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-eight. So we have mapped out targets with our target being sixty-five point eight. So we have mapped out targets with our target being 65.8% this year or next year, all the way to 100% in 27, 28. The interim goals that we developed, um, looked at chronic absenteeism as well as dropout rates. So again, I, I have rea- reiterated to the board the need for our children to come to school for a variety of reasons. Uh, we can provide them with high quality instruction every day if, if they're in our schools. And so we need to focus on that and I think we have made, um, significant improvement in that area. And so we have a tremendous campaign as an aside that we're focusing on this year just to encourage our families, our parents, our community members to get our children in school. So here you will see for this school year, again, we want to look at, monitor, review where we are each quarter so that we can achieve our goal at the end of the school year. So we've listed out some targets, um, for quarters one through four for this year. And I'm not gonna read those targets to you. They're in narrative form and they're in chart form as well. So you see the rates for chronic absenteeism. Also, you will see our dropout rates, which we also, um, think is critical for the success of our children. So we provided to you here, information related to our rates, um, what we're looking at for each quarter, quarter one through four, and where we hope to be by the end of the school year. So that is goal number one. On the next page is goal number two, which is the percentage of students reading on or above grade level by the end of the third grade, as measured by the reading SOL test, will increase from 45% during school year 2021, um, to at least 75% during school year 26, 27. And again, we chose 75% because that's where the state, um, that's where we have to be in order for our schools to be, um, accredited. So you'll see on the first chart, on the second page, you will see all of the targets that we have established so that we can meet that goal of 75% by the end of the 26, 27 school year. So with that in mind, some of the things that we're going to be reviewing throughout the school year include our PALS and our STAR data. So we have targets around all of those areas. So the first, the second chart has to do with PALS data identified and proficient students. And so we have provided to you data from last school year, our results from the spring, and also, um, what our targets are going to be for this school year. So you see the identified targets as well as the targets for proficiency. And then on the next page, you will see information related to, again, our STARS data for proficient and urgent intervention. We have, um, mapped out, um, because our STAR data is very closely aligned with our SOL, um, pass rates. And so we have targeted out from this school year until the end of the 26, 27 year, again, at 75%. You have a question?
Well, yeah, I want you, if, once you're done with that section, I have a question about the STAR piece.
Okay. You wanna go ahead and ask since your hand was up?
Yeah, so, so one piece of clarifying question. So, so the percentage here includes the percentage of all, of students who are at or above or on watch. So it includes that whole group of students, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so one of my questions that I have been wanting to ask, cause I, I noticed even, um, last year when we were monitoring this, um, it looked like the urgent, you were using the urgent, um, category as a correlating group to monitor, uh, for, for showing progress or predicting progress overall, um, for, for STAR. And so one of my, I guess, burning questions was why that urgent group was, um, and not the on watch or even that middle group, um, which is, I think, the needing intervention group? And why the urgent group was that, since they're the furthest away from, um, um, being proficient?
So I, I think it's important for us to know who the children are who are demonstrating proficiency, but certainly we want to know the children who need urgent intervention because we have to intervene urgently.
Right.
So that is just another way of, of looking at all of our children and providing for the needs of each, each child. So for us, again, that's been a big focus for our schools, for our building principal. I think even during our governance training, there was, um, talk about not looking at children as in groups, but looking at each individual child, having a plan for each individual child. And in so doing, if we have their data, we're able to provide specifically for their, their level of support or their need for support. And so that's why we look at all of the data.
Right, and, and I understand that and appreciate, appreciate that response. I guess I'm, I was specifically looking at, um, does that group and movement in that specific group correlate with progress overall, um, in reading proficiency?
We believe it does.
You believe it does versus that needing intervention group? So in your analysis or any correlation analysis, which group, I guess my question is, which group shows the greatest correlation with showing progress is my question? Is it that urgent group? I appreciate that we're looking, you're looking at all of the subgroups, uh, and especially that urgent group. But which group correlates more significantly with progress, um, in students reaching proficiency? I guess is, is that, is the question. Is it that group or is it a different group?
So you're asking which, which group is more...
Yeah, since it's your interim measure, I'm, I'm asking, because I'm assuming that interim measure that you've selected, um, that you've, you've picked these measures because they, um, most significantly correlate with our overall board goal. That that measure is, monitoring that measure, the way that we are monitoring it most closely, is going to tell us that we are, is going to show us that we're going to reach that goal, that board goal. So if you're, if we're monitoring the urgent intervention group, um, I'm assuming that if we're moving the needle for that urgent intervention group, that we are gonna hit that target.
Yes.
But, but, but when I, you know, so I'm asking, is that the, is that the subgroup that shows that greatest impact to the proficient, you know, to hitting that target? Or is it a different subgroup? I mean, we can talk, I don't wanna spend too much time, cause I might be not, I might not be articulating it.
The STAR data is definitely correlated to the SOL data. So, you know, you see here that we pick like, for example, 75% for STAR reading, like at third grade as the proficiency level that we're looking to achieve. So, so yes, we, we do believe that because of that alignment, that we're looking at the right children. Again, all of the, all children's data is important so that you can put appropriate supports in place. So yes, we do believe that these are the groups that we need to look at, which is why we documented that.
Okay, and I ask that cause there's a, potentially a greater percentage of students in that needing intervention group where, I mean, every student needs attention. But for, for data monitoring purposes and for our monitoring purposes, I'm, I'm just, just trying to get a better understanding of, of that for this purpose. So I don't wanna, I mean, I can talk to you offline about it more, um, but, um, I appreciate the response and can defer to others.
Question of clarification, just from the progress monitoring perspective. So with the, with the PALS, the chart that has the, um, fall, winter and spring.
Which page?
I'm on page, I didn't have a...
Three?
Page, I don't, I don't have a page number.
PALS, one, first and second grade?
Under, we're on goal two. We have one chart that says the reading SOL test data, grade three. Then we have something, then we have superintendent's interim goals, that's goal number two. Then there's one chart that shows PALS data, spring. Then there's another chart that shows PALS data, spring, first and second grade. Then there's the third chart. The third chart that has, right, grade identified, first and second grade.
That's the top of page three, okay.
Okay, and it has fall, winter and spring.
Yes.
So what we would actually receive reports on would be how we're doing in the fall, how we're doing in the winter and how we're doing in the spring, which then would give us an indication of what we expect by the end of the year.
If we meet those targets, that, absolutely.
And so likewise, on the, with the STAR, it's a similar thing. But we have a, a chart that shows the, I guess, the quarters. And that's really what we would be, what our progress monitoring reports would be focused on how we are, you're updating us on how we're doing each quarter based upon these targets.
You're absolutely right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, all right, so now, um, if you'll look at goal number three, uh, the percentage of students in the black subgroup reading on or above grade level as measured by the SOL test will increase from 43% during school year 21 to at least 75% during school year 2027. And again, we provided, um, SOL data, data related to specifically our black subgroup. And you can see again, I think I've already explained why we use the 75% as a target. And then we're going to be, the data that we're going to be looking at includes our STAR reading data and, as well as, yeah, basically our STAR reading data. And so you'll see, we provided three additional charts, um, providing again, the proficiency targets as well as the urgent intervention targets, all for, um, mapped out for this school year until 2026, 2027. And on the next page is the, what do we have here? Fall, winter, fall, winter and spring for 2023, 2024. So back to your point, Mr. Jordan, as we are providing data updates to you throughout the year, you will have information related to the percent of our black children who are proficient, and those that need urgent intervention and the targets that we have established so that we can ultimately meet our goal of 75% by 2027, 2028. And then...
Dr. Gabriel, a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
What Ms. Basina was asking, can you refresh, um, my memory on what the categories are again for the STAR? It's, it's, it's proficient and then...
On watch.
On watch.
And then we have urgent intervention, there's one more. Which one am I missing?
Needing intervention.
At or above.
And then proficient.
There's on watch. At or above, there's on watch, there's, it needs intervention.
And then urgent intervention.
All right. Okay, and so if your, your thought process is if we can target those, not target, I know you're targeting everybody, but if we're monitoring the urgent piece of it, then we, then that is a good litmus test for knowing that we're moving in the right direction towards achieving the goals that we've set out.
Because we know these children need the most help.
Okay.
And so those need the most help, likely need the most attention and the most intervention. So if you look at their needs, provide for their needs, you can move them up.
Watching all of them, but this is just the one that you put on as our target. Right, that's just what they think. All right, go ahead.
But I just, I just, on that, so, um, can you give us just some insight as to, um, how much of a stretch or reach or push, uh, with those? So with the, um, we're looking at, so last year, we were at 41%. We're saying this year, percent proficient. This year, we're saying by the spring timeframe, it would be 49%. And then for, so that's eight, eight percentage points. And then urgent intervention, it's about five. Is that, is that a push? Is that...
It's a push.
Okay, can you, can you gotta describe to us where, why you, why that's a push? What that looks like for, for the, like the work on the ground, what that, what that looks like?
It's a lot of work. I mean, it, it is a lot of work and it's a lot of individualized instruction that's needed for children. That includes, um, whatever tier one, tier one instruction that the classroom teacher is providing, whatever, uh, group work is being provided within the classroom as well as our, for example, our UI tutors coming in or retired teachers coming in to provide that additional support. It is a lot of work, but we want it to have goals so that, that demonstrate to you that we have high expectations for our children. That's what we set out to do. And so in order to, to get there, we're gonna have to do everything it takes to get us there. I do believe that we can get there with, you know, highly qualified, effective teachers in every classroom.
Well, that's where I was gonna go next.
But, Mr. Jordan...
Well, no, my question was gonna be, right, so we have, whatever the, uh, conditions are now, whatever it is, what exists.
Yeah.
Then there's what, um, you feel you can accomplish with what we have now and the resources that we have now? If, if, if nothing changes, we're saying that we will, the goal is to reach these targets if nothing changes for the better. Am I saying that correctly? This is, this is based upon how things exist now. So you feel like you have the resources, whether it's financial, whatever the resources are, human resources, to reach these targets as our, uh, lack of a better word, as our inventory is today?
So, Mr. Jordan, we have close to 300 teacher vacancies. I mean, that's just our reality right now. These goals are, are very lofting. And these goals are, have more to do with, with expectations around what we know our children can do if they have a highly qualified, effective teacher each and every day. While we're working to get those vacancies filled, we, we still have to, to do what we need to do to push ourselves to get our kids where they need to be because they deserve that. And it's not their fault that we have so many vacancies. And so we, we still have to, to push and do what we need to do and put as many resources in place that we can to support our class, our children and our classroom teachers who also need support in getting this work done.
No, no, I appreciate that. I, I get, I'm raising that from, from a board perspective and from your perspective that, um, that whatever, whatever it is, the resources that you feel you need to accomplish that, that we provide them or if we need to shift resources to, like, you know, every, every month we ask, I'll ask about, uh, uh, transfers. So if there are additional resources that are needed in order to help achieve this, uh, outcome, not only on these interim period, but over the, what we're trying to achieve over five years, then I'm just raising it so that as we, when we start talking about the budget...
It's already being talked about.
What's already being talked about? No, I'm saying is, uh, the, the board approves the budget, superintendent makes a recommendation for a budget. The board is monitoring progress around student outcomes. So if the, if we currently have certain resources, whether they are in our ongoing budget or whether they are one-time funds that we have, we have to make, I'm trying to get us to make sure that we are communicating around, uh, you know, that the, the Dr. Burzong knows that if there isn't a challenge, and we understand that there is a challenge, then when we start talking about budget and focus and resources and all these other things that we have conversations around as, as adults, that we are providing the supports that are needed and that Dr. Burzong feels comfortable with telling us what's needed and there's no gotchas or anything involved. It's just about providing the administration what they need to accomplish the goals that we have established. That's where I'm trying to make sure, what I'm trying to raise.
So the board could say to me right now, Dr. Burzong, we have $10 million that we'd like to provide to you to, um, ensure that you have additional instructional support for our teachers. to, um, ensure that you have additional instructional support for our teachers. You can give me ten million dollars right now, and I still will have three hundred teacher vacancies right now. At the end of the day, for me, Mr. Jordan, and I, I know that every classroom teacher would agree with me with this, it's that teacher that's going to make a difference. And without the teacher, without the highly qualified effective teacher, our progress for our children will be much slower. So it's not even an issue that you can throw money at, really and truly. The, the teacher shortage is real, and it's real right here in Norfolk Public Schools. And so if I had to, um, suggest to the board something that we really need to look at moving forward, it's right sizing our school division.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's right sizing our school division, and until we do that, we will continue to have hundreds of vacancies. Um, you know, I, I'm thinking about some of our smaller high schools. For example, we can provide more rigorous classes, more cla, courses, I should say, for our kids if we're able to, um, because, for example, for, like, at each school, if there are AP classes that are offered or honors classes or what have you, you need teachers that are certified and qualified to teach those classes. And you may have a, a, a limited pool from which to choose those teachers. And sometimes we, we are in, um, a position now whereby we might have to offer a class virtually because we don't have, have the physical teacher to put in the classroom. And so moving forward, we seriously need to look at right sizing the school division so we can provide more options and opportunities for all kids.
I'm just looking at it from, from where we are right now, looking at, uh, uh, this particular goal around, uh, well, I guess in this particular one, black student subgroup reading. And if we find that, uh, that the campuses that have the largest number of vacancies, uh, if it's also the case that we have large black subgroups in those campuses, then you are going to, there's some actions that, and decisions that you're going to make to, to make sure that we reach that target. And so I'm just raising it because there are decisions that you'll make operationally to get us there. What we're gonna be focused on is, are we getting there? And how we're getting there is, is, is on you. But I was just raising it because I just wanted to have an understanding of what you were using as your, as your baseline, knowing that we have vacancies and whatever other challenges we, we may have.
It, um, again, these goals are lofty goals. I do believe, uh, you know, we have high expectations for our children.
I appreciate that.
I, I just wish we were, were fully staffed, and I would feel more confident that we could get where we needed to be at a much faster pace.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so did, did we, did we do number four yet?
No, we're on four.
Okay, so number four, number four is around, um, okay. As evidenced by the results of the reading and mathematic, mathematics SOL test, by the end of twenty, the school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, student achievement gaps will decrease to be no greater than ten percent among identified subgroups of students in grades three through eight when compared to identified comparison subgroups of students in the areas of reading and mathematics. The performance of all subgroups of students will not decrease below the established baseline and will increase toward meeting or exceeding the VDOE's established performance benchmarks for each content area. So this goal is basically around closing achievement gaps. That, that's what that is in a nutshell. And so I, I did appreciate having the opportunity to, uh, meet with Ms., uh, Ms. Basine and Mr. Jordan to talk about this goal. Um, so we were able to flush things out, and, um, I think we landed in a very good place. And so at the end of the day, we want our children to be able to meet the established bench, benchmarks by the VDOE. And of course, that's seventy-five percent in English and seventy percent in mathematics. And again, we have, the administration went back and we made targets for this year, for next school year, then twenty-five, twenty-six, and then ultimately to twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so what's important here to know is that we looked at basically plus or minus ten, I believe, plus or minus ten. Um, I did a little lesson on that. Pretty well, Mr. Jordan, would I get an A for, um, my teaching abilities on that date?
Yes, very helpful.
So we are closing the gap to negative ten, plus ten. We wanna close that gap so that all of our children are performing at expected levels. But we don't, we don't want, um, any subgroups to, um, to decline in their performance. So that was very important, which is why we included that language in the goal. And again, we went from looking at all children through children in grades three through eight. And I, I'm thinking because of the, the national data, the statewide data, well, specifically statewide, yes, definitely statewide, um, the emphasis on grade three through eight literacy and, and all that, you know, is being done in that area. So, and of course, they're the largest or the biggest concerns with, with those grade levels. So we appreciate being able to focus on grades three through eight. And so you have the pass rates, uh, for the math pass rates on, with our, for our children on the next page. Again, with tar, targets described for each of our subgroups and where they need to be by the end of school year twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. And then, um, on the next page, again, this is still under goal four. The next few pages, we have targets, uh, proficiency targets as well as urgent intervention targets in math and in reading, looking at the STAR, um, looking at our STAR data, and actually, again, mapping out targets starting with this school year until twenty, um, until, actually, it's for just this school year. And again, looking at fall, winter, and spring targets, um, in each of those areas for math and reading, closing achievement gaps. And then finally, goal number five.
What you, I just, on the, um, on the, on the gap one, you had indicated that the STAR fall assessment, I guess, started the week of September twenty-fifth. Do you know when, when you'll be able to populate the, the fall?
Cause we have the data now. Don't we have the data now? The fall?
The STAR assessment closes this week, um, so next week we'll start coming through that data to be able to get it.
Okay. So the next time when we have an update, we'll, we'll have the data.
So that, so.
A while back.
By the, um, the November work session?
Yeah. Right. All right, Mr. Jordan, where did you see that notation? Because I do remember making that notation.
Right, under the, it has a superintendent.
Oh, yeah, the note, uh-huh. Okay, yes. So we started, okay, the week of the twenty-fifth. All right, so that'll be closing soon, and, and that, we'll be able to populate that. And then for the most complicated goal, we kind of went back and forth with this, but I think we landed in a good place. Uh, the percentage of students meeting the requirements for the College Career and Civic Readiness Indicator, C C, C R I.
Are you calling this one the most complicated one?
I, I did.
Oh, yeah?
I, I did. I didn't think they achieved me. I just think that the conversation was interesting and engaging, but I don't think it was the most challenging.
Oh. I thought goal four was.
I thought, no, I thought number five.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I really did. I really did. Um, okay, so we'll increase, um, from seventy-five point two percent preliminary. Did we get a final on that yet? Okay, so it's still at that, uh, it's, we're still at seventy-five point two percent. Um, and then we want to increase that to ninety percent, um, for school year twenty-six, twenty-seven. And again, we've provided targets starting with this school year until, uh, school year twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then, um, the administration will be able to provide you with, with data for, um, course enrollments for children in AP and IB courses as well as dual enrollment. And then, um, looking, and again, we're looking at unduplicated student enrollment for these areas. And then, um, the, the last chart is around service learning completion. Um, and again, all of this, we have the dates to provide updates to you. For example, in November, in March, in June, we should be able to provide update, dates to you about, uh, service learning completion for our students in these three areas. And the administration has put something in place so that we can better monitor that for this year, and we'll be able to provide that data to you. So again, this is the, the second year, this will be the second year at the end of this year for official reporting on C C C R I.
Questions?
Yeah. Well, how does, so each of the interims, if I understand them correctly, deal with enrollment? What's the, isn't there some connection between, or is there a connection between, uh, academic performance or other performance that impacts the indicator beyond just enrollment? So I guess, for example, we're gonna.
Access would be one.
No, I'm saying if we, if we enroll, uh, six hundred students in AP and IB, I guess, I guess I'm asking just from a, trying to understand the formula. I guess there's some, is there some direct correlation between the number of students enrolled and the, and the outcome? Or we're just saying that the more students we think that are enrolled in, um, in these courses will lead to an, a, um, increase in the C C R I? Readiness. I'm, I'm trying to understand beyond enrollment, what do we monitor in terms of folks that score threes on the AP? I mean, what is it that we?
So this, I, I have to say, this, this formula for measuring this is very complicated. And I could probably tell you that only one person in the school division really understands that. I mean, in terms of how the VDOE looks at it and calculates it. From my understanding, we get, we get credit, we get points for, for certain areas like, um, you know, looking at kids that not only enroll, but they have to complete the course, which is why we have that be a part of, of what we're looking at. We don't want children just to enroll in the course because anybody can enroll, but can you complete it and complete it successfully? So that's why we wanted to import, report to you not only the children that enrolled, but also those that completed the course and targets around what that looks like.
Yeah, I think it's the definition of success was, I'm not sure I see here. So I understand completing.
Yeah.
But completing with, I mean, what are we actually measuring with success?
So again, we're, we're looking at kids, uh, because, okay, for, as a high school indicator, they're, they're looking at this for accreditation purposes. And so they're going to be looking at, like, children that successfully complete CTE classes, for example. Children that are enrolled, enrolled and successfully complete dual enrollment classes. Children that are enrolled in IB classes and are able to successfully complete those tests and score at a, a certain level. So all of that contributes to our overall percent for the school division. So again, right now, we're at seventy-five percent, and we, we, our target is ninety percent. So if we don't have kids, and also children looking at service, uh, service projects and, and children engaged in that and actually completing that, all of that contributes to our overall score for C C C R I. There's just a, a lot that goes into that indicator.
Tanya, you wanna add something?
Yeah, um, actually, I'm, I'm really glad Mr. Jordan asked that question. And I know I'm, I'm one who, uh, I mean, my, my initial understanding of this indicator was that success in these courses was also part of the formula. Because I'm pretty certain that most of us don't find it very meaningful that a student just enrolled in it and that would tell us that a student was ready for college or ready for career or ready for life just because they were there. Um, so, um, you know, even for us as a goal, I mean, that's not meaningful to us to just know that they, a student was there. Uh, so I'm having a, um, a little bit, you know, when I was reviewing this, a little bit of a hard time. It's like, okay, well, what does this mean to us without knowing, were they successful in these courses?
That's where it says course completers. That's what it means, that they have successfully completed the course.
Well, they've completed the course, right, but right now it says to be reported, right, yeah, it says to be reported.
See, that's all we can do.
That's all you can do.
Course, and then they can complete it, and then we get the credit for it.
Right, but if this is year two for us, right, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Last year was the first year of official reporting.
Right, so where is last year's?
We were at seventy-five point two percent.
Of course, completers.
Or C C C R I. At, at the division level. That's where we were as a school division. And so we're, we're striving to get to ninety percent.
Okay, but then, under the, so then when you go to the chart, some, I'm now scrolling underneath here. So when you are, when I'm looking at table, the table that says unduplicated student enrollment, advanced placement, AP, IB, and dual enrollment courses, for instance, it says, um, the fall of twenty-twenty-three, there were, what's that?
Now, which is now.
Which is now. So where is fall of twenty-twenty-two and all of the data for that year? If, if this is year two of C C R I, do we have last year's information?
It's in the, look in the first chart. The school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right, so these are all completers?
Five hundred and twenty-five completed the course with a, what, a three or above?
So we're to assume these are all three and aboves? No? I see.
For AP and IB by cohort, these, these are the children, uh, starting with cohort twenty-four, which would be the ninth grader, sorry. The seniors this year, going backwards, and then to ninth grade at twenty-seven.
So, so for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, these are current year. Am I understanding, so this is, so.
The targets, that was last year, those numbers for twenty-two, twenty-three are numbers from last school year.
From last.
And these are the targets for this school year.
Is six hundred.
That's right.
Okay, but that's the target for this school year, but last school year, so for last school year, if I'm understanding this correctly, five hundred and twenty-five students scored three or above? No. I'm, I see, um, you shaking your head, no.
It just means enrollment.
So how many kids, how many, how many students were course completers? So I'm asking for the information that's in the table below for last year. Where would I find that data?
Did we include that data on this chart?
Data for this chart, cohort twenty-four, our current seniors right now, came into this year. There were five hundred and twenty-five individual students who have already completed an AP or an IB course. In our cohort, our current juniors, we have two hundred and eighty-two students who have already completed one. Our students who just rolled up to sophomores, we have a hundred and eleven students who have already completed, which just means they enrolled in it and they passed the course. That's the completer part for the C C C R I. We, we didn't include past year's data because when you start looking at cohort. We, we didn't include past years' data because when you start looking at cohorts, it just starts getting really confusing the further back you go.
Okay.
And so the, the target is that by the time our current seniors graduate, then we will have six hundred individual students who have completed an AP or an IB course. And then if you go diagonally down, by the time our juniors, our current juniors graduate, that they will have had six hundred and fifty, and then the current sophomores, seven fifty, and the current freshmen, eight hundred. So we continue to increase the enrollment and the pass rate of our AP and IB courses. Of the grades, not the assessment, count the test.
So that's enrollment and pass rate.
Of the class, not, you do not have to take a test in, in the AP to count towards the CCCRI.
Okay, so you do not have to take the AP exam to pass. This is just passing the class. So, huh, that's interesting.
But again, this is CCCRI, which you're, I mean, what you're asking is ballot, but it doesn't count towards CCCRI. If you wanted to look at-
So the states-
The number of children passing their IB exam or an AP exam with a three or better, then that would be something different that we would need to look at. But for CCCRI, which is what the board wanted to look at, these are, these are the things.
But I'm starting to wonder, wait, well, but I would assume, okay, but the CCCRI, so if this is just whether they got it, passed the class-
Yeah.
Where there could be grade inflation and a lot of other factors for passing a class, which we know happens in many school districts, like, you know, that could be skewed in all kinds of ways.
Grades are subjective.
Grades are very subjective and I really don't like this.
I don't like it either, but, but we do get data.
We need an overview of this.
Yeah, if I can, I'm gonna, I pulled, I went to the state and pulled their frequently asked questions on this particular one here, and I'm gonna share it out with everybody.
I have seen that and I even shared it with everybody.
But when you look adversely at the CTE program.
Yeah.
Now, the CTE program, you've gotta go through the class, finish two or more standard credits for state-approved sequence, and you gotta earn a credential.
Right.
Right.
Which is, you know, like, an examination, something else. And that's what, I think, Ms. Gosin, you've been sharing with us at the end of the year, how we've gone up in the numbers in that one. But some of the, but I guess an AP course is weighted heavier? And if you're in there and you pass, successfully pass the test, or, or the course, I mean, I know it can be subjective or whatever else, but if you-
It's very subjective.
Yeah, but the other thing I was trying to, it was on this one, is, and I wanted to make sure I was looking at these numbers, is that they can't be duplicated. So even if you are doing career and technical education and you do an AP course, we only count one of them. And so that's what we have reflective in these numbers, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Duplicated numbers.
So they're unduplicated, even though you may have taken AP and a CTE course, we're only counting it one in this chart.
I get that, but I think we still want to know, like, I, for me, I want to monitor whether they got a, I also want to, I also, in addition, want to know, taking the course and enrolling in the course and passing the course is important. But I also want to know if they got a three or better in the exam, because that also, also tells you about alignment, tells you a lot, a lot of things, but-
I don't think there's anything that stops us from saying, and we want to see, who got a three or better.
And it's in this, I know it's in the strategic plan, but I think we want-
That we do report out on.
Yeah, we do report out, yeah, that we're being reported at.
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean, and I want that, to me, that's the whole point of monitoring it. Because if the kids are just enrolling in it and they're passing the class, okay, big deal. But can you be proficient on a test that counts as college credit? That's what we really want to get at. But for the purposes of the CCCRI, which is what this goal says, this is the measuring tool that they have. But within the strategic plan, we absolutely are going to find out the threes, the fours, the fives.
But we were trying, the goal was also to, to align our goals with, anyway.
Well, no, I think it's a-
Further conversation about this.
Well, I think the conversation we need to have is, do we want to modify the goal? Oh, ser- seriously, so as, as, because as we were having the conversation, my question, the, the question I was having is I was looking at this and I was doing the same thing Mr. Clinton was doing. I don't mean modify it significantly.
Yeah, that's-
But should we be looking at this CCCRI by high school versus rolling, versus the roll-up, right? Because each high, each school gets a-
Their own.
Has their own.
Absolutely.
So I wonder if that would look a little-
So to your point, Mr. Jordan, remember, this is a part of accreditation. So if, if schools do not meet this, they will not be accredited.
High schools.
Which is why, that's right, which is why I strongly encourage the board to continue to look at that. I, I really do. So if you look at, I think there was a supplemental document in here, and I know we've looked at a million times with all of our high schools noted, and it has where they are with CCCRI. And in order, so if we look at it instead of like by individual school, I do believe that the board needs to look at it aggregated up to a division level kind of, of, of data point.
Like when we get the full, yeah.
Yes, so does anybody have that chart on them right? I know I have it.
I have an older version.
I know it was in, it should be in your packets today.
Under the, for the accreditation.
Yeah, because I saw it. So it's, so in that chart, you will see where each school, where each high school stands right now. And, and if I could just remind the board just really quickly, again, not Norfolk Public Schools, but VDOE, the qualifying criteria for CCCRI, thank you, this wonderful, beautiful document that you have in, in your packets. So, so it won't be for, like you said, for elementary schools. But right here, for student engagement, that's another, one of the indicators for student engagement is CCCRI. And you can see that we have three of our five high schools that are at level two, and then two at level three. So I would highly encourage you to continue to, to monitor that. Because we don't have any high schools at level one at this point as it relates to CCCRI. And again, the things that they're looking for, the state, credit for an advanced placement course, an IB course, Cambridge or dual enrollment course. CTE finisher, earn two or more standard credits for state-approved sequence in a CTE program and, and earning a CTE credential, which is important. Completion of a work-based learning experience, completion of a service learning experience or completion of three ROTC courses and earning that credential. And so, again, I, I just strongly encourage the board to continue to monitor that because we are certainly not where we need to be as it relates to that. I know it's kind of still new, but we have three schools at level two and two at level three. And so this is an important area because without this, schools will not be accredited. They will not be, Ms. Basina, we could still look at the other thing, I get it. I get it. You want to know how many kids actually are enrolled in an IB class, enrolled in an AP class and, and pass that end-of-year test?
Right.
That is important.
And, and I do believe, I mean, I was being half-hearted when I was saying, you know, maybe we shouldn't be looking at it. We should be, we have to be looking at it.
Absolutely.
And we're required to be looking at it. I know the state is continuing, I think they're also trying to tweak, I mean, they're tweaking every, you know, they're changing everything with their accountability system. So I think a lot of this that we're talking about is going to change. But I think I, I was, I, the piece about the AP passing that part, I, I think I just misunderstood about it not being the exam piece, just not being included in, in the definition. So that, I think that piece of it just kind of took me back. But I appreciate the explanation. I think I understand it a little better and I agree with you. And I think it is, brings home the equity, the equity piece, which is, we talked about a little bit last time about knowing what, you know, what's available to our students in terms of access to these classes. One other thing I wanted to ask about this, and I think we're going to see more of it, and is, is not dual enrollment, but dual credit? Not dual credit, well, yes, dual credit. Where a student could take, and a student could take credit or take classes outside of the school system, but seek credit within the school division for having taken that course. And I think that we've had a couple of students that have sought that within the school division. And I've seen like other districts where that's come up and they're, I think it's called like dual credit, where, where you get the credit, you know, like at, at a community college for taking like pre-calculus, for instance. They've taken, you know, that higher level class in high school, they want the credit at their local, I mean, they've taken the class, yeah, they've taken a college credit class.
Dual enrollment?
It's not dual enrollment because you're not taking it, it's, it's that you've already taken it outside of your high school.
It's like concurrent credit.
Concurrent.
Some, some students in particular.
Concurrent credit.
Yeah, it's, it's different than dual enrollment, but, because you're not enrolled at the same time. Because you could come into the school district, like you could come, you know, you could, you could also move into the district and have this credit from another, you know, from TCC and, or come in from another state and have this credit, you know, or another, yeah, or another high school and have this credit having taken it at a, at a community college or somewhere else. But I think we're going to see more of that, and so-
Especially online courses.
Yeah, and especially with online courses too, and college courses. So just, just wondered if that's come up in your conversations too. But we could, we can table that discussion for another time. So just wanted to put that pin.
Can I just ask a clarifying question then?
Sure, and then we're going to move on, please.
Yeah, so are we keeping the goal or not as is?
I'm fine with keeping it as is because we are still monitoring it through the strategic plan. And again, this is what state requires.
Right, but if we're, if we're monitoring it through the strategic plan and whatever it is that we're monitoring through the strategic plan is what we need to prioritize, then why wouldn't-
They're both priorities.
Let me finish. Why, if the strategic, if there's something in the strategic plan that focuses on what students know and can do, then why don't we shift that to the, to the goal? To say that if, if this is what we're focused on and this is what we're going to be spending our time monitoring, and if we're saying that there's something in the strategic plan that better speaks to what the board is trying to see, then maybe we need to change the goal. Maybe this goes into something that we look at.
Anyone want to comment, reply?
I would have to see exactly what we have monitored in the strategic plan.
Yeah, I'm just-
Because the strategic plan's goal right now is, gives us more information and gets us to the point of the real meat of what we want to know as a board. This is just meeting the accreditation standard. Our, our strategic goal goes above and beyond that.
Which is, which is my point.
Yeah, so I would just have to see, I don't want to, I don't want to-
I think we need to come back and revisit it, if, if it's not giving us what, what we expect.
I, I'm going to say real quick, I, I agree with Dr. Gabriel and may, yes, we could possibly come back and revisit it. But again, this serves the accreditation purpose to add, we're not adding anything more superfluous or whatever, like on to other ones. So, you know, it's very, it's very specific to what we're doing here. And comfortable having it both.
My only point is, is that if it's just about, if it, if it's not giving us a real sense of what students know and can do, then as a board, maybe we revisit or maybe we take it off as a goal. But I want to, I don't want to have it just because we have it, it has to have some, some purpose and meaning. And I know I have unreadiness now, and so I don't know where others feel. So I'm just saying that maybe as a board, we just need to re, relook at it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say I have unreadiness. I would say just as much as this, this is one of those accreditation things that just we got the information and we had to wait the whole year. I would say I'd be more inclined to, we have a framework, let's go through this year. We know that on an annual basis, we're going to come back. Because in my mind, I could think of some things that I'd like to see. But I also think that this goal as it is right now also points out some other things. Ensuring that, you know, to, we'll get to these guardrails and whatever else down there. Superintendent, it's like, well, how are we getting more students? How are we providing better access and some of the other things there? So I wouldn't say unreadiness, I would say let's roll with it this year, come back and revisit it and see what we might be able to adjust so that the administration can continue, at least with this one, and that we know on an annual basis we're going to review. But I'm with you in the respect that there's some things we could potentially do, but I, I wouldn't stop it right now.
Yeah, I'd like to-
No, that's, I've already spoken.
One last comment, it's just a suggestion. I personally, I, I think we've had really good discussion around this and I, I think that, you know, as we, as we begin the next school, the next school year, and I know, you know, I'm-
Twenty-four, twenty-five?
I'm talking about twenty-four, twenty-five. And I say this only because I know this school year is a big planning year for VDOE as well and with their new accountability system. And it's a, it's a big planning year for them. It's, I think this is a, a great exercise for us in terms of going through this process of establishing our goals, and we're going to have these great goals. But what I would like, what I suggest is that we revisit, we revisit this goal. We keep it here, but we revisit, you know, especially like goal one and goal five in particular. You know, as perhaps, I think we revisit them because I think for me anyway, both of them are not as focused on student outcomes, what, what students know and can do the way that I would like to see and what are the way I think we, we could do, the way we should really focus on it based on what our data tells us that we should focus on, you know. So I kind of see this as our planning year too. And so that maybe we really have some real opportunity here, I think, to come back and really better understand, A, what the state is going to ask us to really look at with the new accountability system, that we have a shared understanding of that new accountability system because it's going to be very different, I think. And, and that, you know, we just kind of, I think we have some great, the other goals I think are really good and that we focus on those and we work, get to the constraints and, you know, kind of go from there. And so that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. All right, up next, on the agenda, we have development of board-
Didn't you say?
Superintendent, and I-
Manager, I know on that one. So what's the next step on this one? Are we putting this on the, for a vote or something? We don't, we don't vote.
We already voted on the goals. These are the interims, these are Dr. Bird's songs.
We need to-
We're just going to continue to monitor and monitor the progress on the monitoring calendar.
Part of the next step is making sure that the monitoring reports align with what we have, what we've talked about, and then, as Tanya said, decide if we're going to have some constraints or not.
I'd like to pose this question to the board or thought. So since we're going to be focusing on these five goals, then I would suggest that, that our conversations be around these five goals during our work sessions and then perhaps provide a report to the board around strategic plan, data points, because a lot of the data points in the strategic plan, of course, are within the goals. But that will help us to stay more focused on these five areas. And as you know, our strategic plan has a lot of different data points that we look at and strategies and, and all of that. So that would be my recommendation as we move forward, that the administration, as we're planning our presentations to the board, that we be able to focus on these five goals and reporting out on these five goals as opposed to-
Yes, that's the intent.
I would-
I agree.
Because honestly, when I saw the, when I, when I saw the-
All right.
Thumbs up.
See all those smiles?
Yeah, because when I saw the strategic plan update, that was my immediate response. I thought we'd agree.
Well, we had board update, so it got, I don't, it was revised, so.
And I also would like to have the visuals. So we need to decorate these walls, not just with our students' beautiful artwork, but come up with a visual to show our progress so we are reminded every single day when we walk in here where we are and where we need to be. If we can, you know, we talked about doing that, I think it's important. If we can, you know, we talked about doing that, I think it's important.
So you want a data wall?
What's up?
Want a data wall?
You see that when you go visiting the schools?
I also want to paint the walls. Okay, alright, um so two point zero three, I want to make a proposal that we change the word constraints to um parameters. I think constraints is just a really negative word.
Why would we say guardrails?
Or non-negotiables.
We don't want to do guardrails, non-negot, non-negotiables is kind of long.
For limitation, I mean, well, how about, how about we, right now, could we, could I propose this? Um can we, can we conceptually, like while you think of other synonyms?
I've already gone through the thesaurus.
Yeah, other synonyms for constraints, let's, um can we, can we talk about the concepts right now, the five concepts up here for the non-negotiables?
Non-negotiables, you won.
Where, I don't know that we're going to call them non-negotiables? I mean, that's what we were calling them, non-negotiables.
Negotiable.
Non-negotiable one, I mean, that's kind of a mouthful, but um or guiding principle, whatever, you know. That's a mouthful too, but um but right now, so there's, there's five constraints and I just. Well, five non-negotiables, sorry, that was, I'm I'm looking at the document in front of me. So there's five non-negotiables up there and just similar to what we did with the board goals. Right now, you know, you've had this document probably for a month. And Mrs. Moore Buffalo, are you there still? It's okay, she's not, yeah.
I am.
Okay. So we have the five non-negotiables and um so hopefully you've had a chance to review each of them and, you know, I don't know if you want me to read each of them for you, but we can talk, we can go through each one. Um and we can, we can go through the process of keep, modify and delete, or if you want to change or offer a different uh non-negotiable, I can also, I'd be happy to talk to you a little bit about how these were derived and actually I will start, I will start there because first, I want to make very clear, these have come from discussions that we've had as a team in in various ways. You know, I went back and looked through some of our meetings or minutes. Um obviously governance training, discussions that we've had and also some of our past um guardrail work that we did um two years ago. Um and also as um you know, non-negotiables, non-negotiables are, you know, they're they're not meant to be in smart form like like our board goals. And um so they're really supposed to reflect, you know, what our community expects us to, they're supposed to reflect, you know, the vision and values of the community. And so we all um have taken lots of opportunity to speak with the community in the past. We also did have done community listening sessions, we've um and I went back through some of our notes of those listening sessions as well and tried to incorporate those comments and feedbacks uh that we received at that time also, so you'll see some of that reflected um in here as well and of course, I took um some of the community feedback that we got through the strategic planning process and that is also reflected in the strategic plan, so you'll see some similar language that is also in the strategic plan. So like Dr. Gabriel just said, we have lots of tables in the strategic plan. So another way of trying to pull out some key um key uh tables that we might, we might monitor or look at, you know, was also to kind of prioritize some non-negotiables um in that realm as well. So so you'll see some of these non-negotiables came from there. And so the non-negotiables are, we want the superintendent to achieve these goals, the five goals that we just talked about, but within these parameters or these non-negotiables, that these cannot be broken, so to speak, or these have to be maintained, um these five uh non-negotiables. And so with that, you guys, guys have all read them. I'm happy to read them, but I think everyone is shaking their heads no. So I'm going to open it up for conversation and discussion and feedback. So floor is open.
I think you said it, um these five things pretty much tells the superintendent, you do whatever you want around these things, but don't move or change or lessen or do anything and diminish in any of these areas and I think that Ms. Bassin, you captured it well. This has been a lot of the things that we've talked about over the years and they've come up. Um and like I've shared and expressed with you, I'm fine with them. Um the way that they're presented here, I think that they they capture um some of the sentiments that I would, I would feel, so I'm good.
Okay, great. And um just to be very brief and um is, you know, the five, the five areas that the non-negotiables cover, you know, are high quality curriculum and instruction, equitable allocation of resources and workforce, equity, communication and engagement, safe, caring and welcoming environments. So those are the five, five main areas that the non-negotiables cover.
And I just want to specify, when I say for the superintendent to do whatever he needs to do within that, within the law.
Of course.
But I, could you um, Ms. Bassin, like on constraint two, you've got a progress measure?
Um, yes.
Can you just kind of elaborate on what that, what those are, because you don't have them for all, but you do have them on two and three?
Yes, so for two and three, and um as I mentioned earlier, so we had done some guardrail work um a couple of years ago and so just as an example, um I had pulled some old, just for exam, you know, for example. And actually, it's either from there, actually, or from the strategic plan monitoring table. So I think three point one is, actually, that is from old guard, these are, these are both from old guardrail work, but we have similar tables also in the strategic plan related to to both of these, so.
Would it be?
And just, just an example to, so that you know. But but it, but just like the goals, I want to be clear, the progress measures are the superintendent's to develop.
So what I can uh offer is keep the constraints the way that they are, I would certainly want to get Dr. Birdsong's feedback um on that, but maybe, maybe since our focus for this year is the student outcomes and our goals, the ac- the academic goals, as long as we have the constraints listed, maybe not do any progress measures for this.
Well, they go together. So just as we would be monitoring progress around goals, we also be monitoring progress around the interim non-negotiables. Because so for example, we were just having the conversation earlier around the A P and the I B and so forth. So I'm not using specifically what Ms. Bassin has there, but if we had a non-negotiable that said that, or even we were talking about student vacancies. So if we have a non-negotiable that says that no school will uh go without having uh A P classes, then that then puts that focus for the administration to say, well, based upon these goals and based upon these non-negotiables, what is it that we're going to measure, so we would be able to, I'm just using this as an example, if we know we start off with a baseline where we have um schools that have twenty percent vacancies, then within that non-negotiable, we would be looking at the superintendent came back around that and said that um by the end of this year, it's going to go from five schools to three schools. We would be monitoring that just as we would be monitoring the the student outcomes, so the two go together.
I just, I just think it's a lot.
It is.
It's, it's, it's a lot. And if our focus right now is on these really impactful student outcomes layered without the strategic plan, I I I really want us to, you know, if we've been said, can we go deep versus wide? Maybe we just go deep on the goals and then for 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 this time, we maybe this is our work in progress and maybe this is our building year for for this. But I I think it would just be too much to layer on more monitoring goals right now for for this piece. I I'm, it's just, I mean, this is going to be Dr. Birdsong, this is another thing for her and her staff to have to to layer on and I think third grade reading proficiency is something that we have just all said is so important and critical um in in addition to the other things that we've mentioned, so.
Can I just respond? So I hear you, I think we need to do both, but I I I think the if we stayed, if we do this with fidelity, I think what we layer on to Dr. Birdsong is all of our engagement and our operational work. So I hear you about the strategic plan, the strategic plan still exists, it's still being monitored, it's still being worked on. Dr. Birdsong owns that, she will report to us progress. We're, we're actually narrowing and and basically even when we're having the conversation around the constraint being a negative, actually see it the other way. So, you know, my, my mother would say to my brother and me, when the porch light is on, you have to be home, alright? Now, we knew there's certain things we couldn't do, we couldn't do anything that was negative, but we had freedom then to do all these other things as long as we didn't break the law and we were home by the time the porch light came on. It's the same thing that we're trying to say here with the, with the constraints or the limitations. It actually, I think, is more empowering and what we have to be disciplined about is not layering on all these other things outside of where our, where our focus is. And so I think this is uh is important and it gives us an opportunity to drill down on what we think is superintendent work, what we think is board work and allow the superintendent to do whatever it is that she and her team feels is necessary within these non-negotiables and therefore the superintendent doesn't have to come back to us month after month after month saying, board may I, we sit up front, you can do whatever you want, these are the only may I's that that you have to be considered.
I'm glad that you said that because it it triggered a conversation that I had with Ms. Bassin when we spoke on the phone about this and it was, it was along the lines of resizing the division. So if Dr. Birdsong were to propose to us a educational plan that re-size, resizes the division, for example, um then we should accept it.
We would, as long as this.
As long as it's his, as long as it's within these constraints.
That's what the superintendent should do.
Yeah.
It's not our job to do that.
Yep, and she was reminding me of that conversation.
Because I was looking back at the school board constraints and I said, well, what about our constraints?
We need to have those too.
We need to have them also, right.
But but I I just think our tendency is, is to do what we, like we do now, we will work on something, then we'll say we'll get to it and the next thing you know is January. And I don't think that's fair to the administration, the board or the or the community. So if this is something we're going to do, we need to drill down, focus on it, execute it and then get to our job of monitoring the progress towards it and work on our behaviors to make sure that we're not layering on all the other stuff.
Are we going to, are we going to mandate three progress measures for each of these?
No.
No, it's up to.
That's up to the superintendent.
I mean, we're, we're layering, we're layering another piece on Dr. Birdsong's plate.
It's, it seems that way, but I think it's actually going to be more liberating than it is, it it's work up front, but I think in the long run, I think it's going to be less work and I think there's, I think the administration's going to see how the alignment with the strategic plan and I think it's going to be an opportunity for us to really get out of the way.
Well, how do we, we table this?
Table what? Uh, I'm sorry, like the which part?
Well, we're, we're, are, we need to keep moving on. So I would like to maybe start with this, our next governa- uh board governance.
Okay, well.
I'm good with the five without the progress. Measures.
I mean, the the progress measures come back from administration anyway, so if we're comfortable with the five.
So is everyone comfortable with the five, we can adopt the the five. So is everyone?
Well, hold on a second, does Dr. Birdsong?
I want to hear back from her.
Yeah, I do.
Guys review this and as you're working on the, the progress measures, you can come back and give us feedback on maybe some suggestions on changing the constraints.
I have a couple of comments. So I I remember working on this when we were working with the Council of Great City Schools and I'm, I'm going to express the same concerns that I expressed at that time. These constraints or non-negotiables or whatever we're going to refer to them as, to me, they are, they're very negatively worded, I think there's a way that they can be worded and that's not a a big thing, but it is a big thing because, you know, these are, these are some non-negotiables that me and and potentially myself and my team that we will be reviewing and it doesn't, it doesn't set us up for a feeling of of trust and collaboration and and all of that. I mean, they start with the superintendent will not allow this, the superintendent will not allow that, it's just, it just sounds very negative and again, I know we're all working on trust and building relationships and to start anew with something like this doesn't feel like we're moving in that direction. So I continue to express concerns around the way um in in which they're worded. Also, um I I hear that it's just basically, I would just give it to the, to the administration to go back and do. Well, the administration has gone back and done a lot and we're in October now. Um I certainly appreciate having non-negotiables, really and truly I do. Um I I just wish that we can, we can as a governance team be prepared to flush these things out so July first, we are ready to take action and and move forward. Whenever something like this, and this is something major, this is, this is something major, this is not something that we have a ten-minute conversation about, then send, send it back to the administration to do. We're doing a lot, I mean, the the five goals that we have established, that we've collaborated around, I mean, it it has taken a lot, especially as we are into the school year already, working with our students, working with teachers, working with building principals, pulling support away from them so we can go back and develop you know, interim measures for that, interim measures for this, again, it's a wonderful process, but the timing of it is not conducive to what we need to do to really, really focus on our focus. Again, I think the process is wonderful and great if we start early on with it. Again, here we are in in October, we're in October now, the school year, I mean, kids are back, teachers are back, principals are back, everybody's working and here we are being sent back to work on something to accomplish by the end of the school year. That's not really fair to me and that's not really fair to the administration and ultimately not fair to the kids because we're pulling support away from them so we can go back and brainstorm and take four hours a day to to put all of these things together. Again, it's not to say it's not important, I do believe it's important. Yes, having non-negotiables on both sides for the superintendent, certainly, that's important and for the board, that's important as well and I think we should talk, spend as much time as we're talking about non-negotiables for me as much time as we need to to talk about that for the board, again, as we're building trust and relationships and moving forward in a very positive um collaborative um direction. Um I just think the timing of us now, again, having to go back to develop these progress me- measures to um align with constraints, again, it it's going to take a lot of time, especially if we want to do it well and with fidelity. So I would encourage the board to consider, consider continuing to work on these non-negotiables and and let's have something so that, you know, July one, at the beginning of the school year, we have our goals already established, we have our non-negotiables established so that we can really focus on our focus and we don't feel like, you know, we're changing the goal, we're changing courses, we we need to go back and do this, yes, we need to make course adjustments when we, when we find that our students are not meeting with success. and at the rate that we expect them to. Yes, we need to do that. Progress monitoring, that's what it's all about. But I think having us go back at this point of the school year to have my team to spend more time on creating progress measures for each of these constraints, again, and I have concerns about how they're, they're, they're worded. I understand the concept behind them. Um, I, I would just, that would be my feedback to you around this area. So, thank you for the opportunity to share.
All right, um, let's move on to.
So, what's the?
So, we've already rewrote and written a positive one. We can do this on ChatGPT and keep it moving.
What's that? Well, I, you know.
And make a positive tone.
My, my, I think the, the, I guess my, my, my con pushback would be is over the summer, when we, I, I think we, we.
I would even go.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just think we, 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 we play ping pong with this. So, I think part of the focus and the discipline we have to have when we're working on our agendas and our planning is, so during the summer, we deferred stuff because we said something else came up. Now we, but we said we would get to it before September. Now we're in October and we're having conversations about, well, now we're, school has started. I think we can do, um, uh, I think we can get this done. Um, if we have some comfort level with, uh, uh, the high-level constraints. And then we can look at, or you all can look at in agenda planning, how we plan out what makes sense for, uh, making sure there is adequate time for, um, for the administration to come back and maybe we end up adopting these by January. But I, but I, but I think we need to set a deadline and execute. And I know that we talk about the way it's written is negative, but it's, you know, you all know it's just like in the, whether it's the Ten Commandments or the Book of the Dead, the Hundred and Forty Seven Negative Confessions is just saying,
I don't know that one.
This is what you don't do, which then says, feel free to do the, the other things. Trying to write them another way, I think, tends to make them, uh, more difficult to, to understand. But I'll just, I'll just leave that there. But it seemed like there's board support for what we have. I think we should at least acknowledge those and, and put those for adoption at the business meeting. And then we can have conversations around, uh, scheduling out the, the interim pieces of it.
Position to that? Go ahead.
I just, I completely hear what you're saying, Mr. Jordan. And it's not that I, again, in principle, don't support what we have here. And I think that this could be our working homework in collaboration with the superintendent, building up to going into the next school year. But for right now, I really would prefer for the superintendent and her team to focus on those academic pieces that we have put out for the goals. And, and hearing from what she just said, I, I don't want her to take away any time from, from those pieces for, for this year, considering this as her building year. And I just wanna say, I think we have made, as a team, we have made some great progress with the goals that we have adopted, simplifying it, targeted. I think we've made some great progress. So, I think that we are in a much better place than we have been. Uh, and this is something that we need to work on. This is a good homework assignment for us, but right now, I don't feel comfortable putting it on for adoption right now. Uh, it's, hearing what the superintendent just said, I just, again, let her focus be those five academic goals and we will work on this together to frame it a little bit more positive, to put those meaningful constraint, or the.
Interims.
Interims in, and then go from there.
Good thinking over there.
No, I mean, I'm just, going back to, I mean, what are the, the purposes of this thing? It's to say, this is the block. Superintendent, you can do whatever you wanna do outside of that, to complete whatever we need. Um, and I'm hearing the superintendent in respect of two things, that just, she doesn't like the way that it's worded. It seems a little bit negative, which I think that's something that we can definitely address. And definitely hearing about time and focus. Um, and I think that as a part of our own, you know, governance and things that we're doing here, it's something that we can definitely work on. Um, I would be more amped to adopt the five. Um, but to go back wordsmith, come back to make it in a more positive tone. Um, and that we make the commitment in our timeline that we send back to agenda planning and whatever else down there, that we continue to work with the superintendent throughout the year on what those progress measures and so forth are. But I think that it gives a sense, cause I think that there is consensus around the five. Um, from what I've heard so far, uh, that, that allows some sense down there and that we make that commitment to work towards it. So, um, I would be, I, you know, I'd be more than happy to, to, to finish before we get leave here tonight. Um, and like I said, I already ChatGPT'd it. Um, so, um, to reword it and put it in a positive tone and, and come back. And I think that we, we put it on for next month, uh, in that positive tone and that we continue to work on it throughout the next year, from the, throughout the, the school year.
Tony.
Um, I appreciate everyone's feedback and Dr. Birdsong, I appreciate your, your feedback as well. And I, I hear you about the, um, the, the tone of the non-negotiables and, um, understand why, you know, that it sound, it sounds as a negative. Um, but, you know, as Mr. Jordan says, I guess I see it as what it does free up. And, and I see it, it can also be seen as a positive in terms of all the other things that you can do. But I also see it as, um, a clear, you know, we always talk about, you know, giving clear direction. Um, and what is clear direction? And I know you, um, I know we haven't been great at giving clear direction. And so, in, in a lot of ways, I feel that it's, it's positive in the sense that it does give clear direction in that, um, anything that is in the will not, you know, is, is you can, um, you know, can do. Um, and so, you know, you, an example was brought up earlier about, you know, AP, increasing enrollment in AP courses. And I think about, gosh, that's great. We've increased enrollment of, uh, students, the percentage of students taking AP courses and not only taking AP courses, but they're passing AP courses. But gosh, all those courses are at Maury High School. Gosh, have we done a great job? I don't think we've done a great job. Do you? I don't think so. But that's really, you know, and I asked when we started the, asked to do the constraints conversation. Um, and actually, that conversation was requested back in the spring. And, and you guys might requ- remember that when I asked to do the goals, I even like kinda jokingly said that I was gonna sit in and not leave until we had that discussion. So, the discussion was not meant to be had in October or anywhere near the start of the school year. And unfortunately, um, the way, you know, things have come up and gone and, um, you know, with, with planning meetings, um, you know, I don't know how it happens, but it happens. And here we are in October, trying our darndest to, to get everything through so that it's not infringing on, on time. And, you know, I worked really hard, um, to, to work on this. Um, and I know board members, including Mr. Jordan, worked really hard to, on the board goals and trying to, you know, get us to a point where our focus was on students, is on students. Because, you know, our equity audit that we recently received showed us that unless we're being intentional, that words on paper, like I'm hesitant, like I'm glad, I'm so glad we all agree on these five non-negotiables. But for me, that even though I'm glad we agree on them, that unless we're being intentional around them, I'm almost like, why are we bothering voting on them at the same time? Because this equity audit showed us that we've had an equity policy since 2016. And what did this equity audit show us? I don't think most of us left very happy with what it showed us. And so, either we, right now, not only do we say we're gonna vote on these five non-negotiables August, October eighteenth, but we also say that January, that we are not leaving. Like you all join me and say that we're not leaving unless there are progress measures to go with them. Because it's so important that we're intentional as a team to, to say that and to tell the administration that, that together, we're gonna, we're in it together. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's, it's, it's going to be a good thing for all of us. And, and yes, there are non-negotiables for us too. Cause it's part of our self-evaluation, it's part of, um, the work we're doing. And we're, we're doing work too, um, and trying to. Um, and I know I've been spend, spending time on this also. So, I'm, I'm really disappointed. I feel like it's, you know, you know, I'm trying not to say why bother having done it. If, if, you know, it's like words on paper to me, if we're, if we don't have the commitment to actually move forward with it, I would say don't even put it on the agenda. Um, because, um, right now, we've had a history of not doing things. I want us to do, do this with fidelity. And to do it with fidelity and purpose, um, let's do it with purpose. So, that's what I'm asking my, you all to do. Um, so, uh, that's my, that's my comment for tonight.
Do we have a lot more to get through?
I'm, I know we have a lot more to get to, but, but this is really important. And that, that, that's the history of how we go through, go through the meeting. You know, it's like we have a lot to get through.
We do, but we've also spent our entire time on board governance. And I think we've gotten to a good place where we need to have more conversation around the constraints. And it'll be on the November work session.
It'll be on the November work session? The constraints?
I mean, the, yes, to, um, I, I would like to do some work between now and then.
On the constraints?
Yeah.
Why? I mean, for what?
Well, because we do have, it, like our meeting has eight more minutes in it and we still do have a lot of work to.
Okay.
Just trying to balance. Um, so, up next, we have the school board constraints, um, continuing the drive, strategic plan. Dr. Paul, thank you.
Ms. Tanner, just make a note to please add that to the next.
I thought we were. I thought we were, I thought we were, this was gonna be a report.
What's that?
I, I thought we talked about this being a report.
We talked about it today, but of course, we were prepared for the meeting today, which was, this was on the agenda. So, we wanted to be prepared for the agenda. Yeah. So, we, we just had that discussion today and, and I felt like I got board agreement to, moving forward, that we would do reports on the strategic plan. And we would be reporting our own goals, but that wasn't decided before today. But I did have it on the agenda, but it was taken off, so here we are.
Okay.
You had which part on the agenda?
School board goals, like reporting out on the five goals. I think we were ready. What, what kinda data did we have for today?
Uh, the data we had for the school board was around the AP, IB, dual enrollment, just the enrollment solidification numbers. Um, and then for the, um, strategic planning update, we had two presentations. One was the final accreditation data presentation and the other one were the tables. And I could see tabling the tables and using that as a report. But we also were prepared for the accreditation data update like we've done every October.
So, if, if the board would like, we can use this time just to provide you an accreditation update like, that we usually do in October. And then, um, you know, based upon the decision that was made this evening around reporting out the, on the strategic plan, we can, well, you have the information, so now it's, you have the information. So, is that the will of the board?
I just try, I'm just trying to make, what do we take off?
We, uh, it was school board goals update. Just like we have like a strategic plan, continuing the drive update. I requested that we have a school board goals update. You know how we talked about having a monitoring calendar and reporting out on the data?
Right.
Well, we had data, um, related to number five, goal number five. And we were gonna report out on it today as a part of moving forward.
Progress monitoring, yeah. Why did we take it off?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Cause I, just for me, like if we're gonna talk about accreditation and we said that we have a goal around accreditation, you would've given us a report on accreditation and it would've been a part of what we just discussed. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. We, we'll work on our board constraints.
And, and, and.
Cause I didn't know, I hadn't seen that.
And if it's possible, do we want to, you know, you have a presentation right now, Dr. Paul, but we'd still have, um, other items to get to. So, um, can we pace ourselves so that way we can get to our, uh, closed session by a reasonable time then?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I can, I can.
I'm out, that's seven, I, I won't be here.
The preliminary data is not too different than the final data. So, if you could just.
Get several slides of data and just go over some of the new stuff in here for you. I'm, I'm happy with that. I will do my best to ignore my script, which is very difficult for me. But I will go through the slides so you can see for the benefit of time. Absolutely. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Would that work for the board? Does that work?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, good afternoon or evening. Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, Board Members, and Dr. Birdsong. We're gonna do an abridged version of our accreditation update. And as Dr. Birdsong mentioned, uh, most of the data is very similar to what we saw in July. I'm gonna go through just real quick for public. When you look at the, uh, presentation, you'll see what constitutes each of the performance levels um, within, um, the accreditation process. Um, and then what are the indicators for success that are defined through the accreditation process? And then this slide shows our, uh, school accreditation summary. And you'll see this year, we did move from fifty-seven point one percent to sixty-one percent um, for our accreditation update, cause we gained Coleman Place this year. And you'll notice our denominator has gone from forty-two to forty-one because of the closing of Tidewater Park. Um, so that's, that is our, our new denominator for right now. Um, and then this slide just shows the, the numbers that are at the indicator level one, two, and three for each of the, um, uh, areas that are covered under accreditation. Just as an example, you can see in twenty nineteen, English was at twenty-eight at level one, now we're at thirty. Uh, for level three, it was as high as ten in nineteen twenty, now we're down to four. So, we're moving in the right direction from level three to level one, um, with that example I just gave. Um, English data, um, one of the things we did add to the presentation this year, just so you have it, is we added the combined reading and writing because that's really what accreditation is based off of. Um, so these, the next few slides are all tables you guys received in July. I believe you've received an updated set of tables and now the final set of tables were uploaded into board docs as well. Anything on the presentation with an asterisk means there was a change from the July data. And in general, I wanna say ninety-nine percent of those changes were positive movements up, um, with the data. Um, and a lot of that has to do with the VAP scores, which are Students with Disabilities, um, where they take an alternative assessment program. Um, and, and when those scores came back, that rose some of our scores across the board. So, it is, it's, it's good that those all have the right direction of move is what we wanted. So, this slide has it demographically, um, and this is the SOA, so this includes your combined. So, it includes your growth rate as well, um, in the data on slide number eight. Um, and then I'm just, again, I'm gonna go through these quick. These are the tables you guys already have, um, that you've seen before. Um, this is the, the reading data by level. Um, the reading and writing by grade level, the writing's on the bottom. You see it's only grade eight and EOC course for grade eleven, generally grade eleven students take it. It might be a different grade level, but that's the EOC course. Um, and then the reading data by demographic, and this is your SOA combined, so it includes our growth rate. You do see these dropped a little bit, uh, mainly because our students started stronger this year. So, we didn't see as much growth as we saw right after coming back from the pandemic the first year for our SOL testing to be, uh, reinstituted. Um, and then this is the same, the annual pass rates that we focus on demographically. We stayed level, um, with our reading scores this year when we look at pass rates, when the, when the end was made. Originally, we thought we dipped a point, but we did end up staying level once all the final scores came in. Um, and then our SOA combined rates, uh, by demographics. Um, and then the going to re- writing again, annual pass rates by demographics. Then one of the things that we were asked for was with pass advance. So, we've added our, our performance bands. The blue on the top are our students who perform pass advance, the green are pass proficient, and the gray are the students who, uh, didn't quite make the mark of pass. who didn't quite make the mark of passing the test. This slide is broken down demographically. And the next slide is broken down to give you trend data of our all students group to see where those bands are. So with the school board goals, with the strategic plan, and one of the things we want to focus on as well is, is how are we looking at that blue band on the top to get that rigor and, and get that higher success rate as well? Another thing we added on the presentation is to look at gap data, because we have that with school board goals, and we have that with our strategic plan as well. The gap data presented on this slide is against the group and the non-group. So it's, take for instance, um, the, the multirace is kind of covered by Ms. Moore Buffalo. So take the Hispanic group, which stays pretty close, you'll notice. The solid line is the Hispanic group. The dash line is everybody that's not in that group. So the non-Hispanic group. And that, that gap is at 6%, and it rose up a little from last year. Last year, it was at 3%. And then this is the gap between our SWD, SES, and our EL populations. And then on the bottom, in order to kind of stay in line with the board goals, we opted to put a gap group of our black subgroup and our white subgroup, because that's with goal four on the school board goals. So that will show you that data as well. I don't know if, well, if you, could you lift Ms. Moore Buffalo's head up a little bit, maybe?
Can I say, can you definitely?
There we go. If you put it in the top right corner, that would be best. Yeah, there we go. That's perfect.
Perfect.
So here.
She liked it. She liked it.
We love the heart, Ms. Moore Buffalo. That's awesome.
She's paying attention, see?
Here you can see the gap is at 27%, but it did decrease from the year before. And I think it was a, a percent decrease, but we saw a decrease in the gap between our white subgroup and our black subgroup. So, no, can you click on the PowerPoint? It just, it took my, just click up there anywhere.
Okay.
There we go. Thank you. Regionally comparison, looking at within our, within our, our region, and then comparable across the state is, is really looking at Richmond beyond our region, because we're really comparable with Hampton, Newport, Newport, Smith, and Richmond when we look across the state. Looking at our, our gains and losses, you can see here, only one division gained a point. The rest either stayed level or dropped in reading pass rates. And then one of the things we added this year, excuse me, was the heat map for reading, and we did this for math and science as well. And the darker the green, the higher the pass rate. The darker the red, the lower the decline in pass rate across the state. So all the yellow you see is where we stayed level. When it starts to get darker yellow into red, we see drops in pass rates. And now I'm going to repeat the process for math. Math is not quite as confusing, because there's no reading and writing kind of duality in here. So our mathematics, SOA combined rate, which again includes our growth, in here, we did see a decline, again, because our students started stronger this year. When we look at that by demographic, same kind of a breakdown. When we look at our pass rates, though, we do see an increase. So our pass rates, you know, as we noted last year, they're not as high as our combined rates, because it doesn't include growth. But we see increases in our pass rates. This is by grade level and subject for our EOC courses. And then this is demographically. And then same as we did for reading, our, our proficiency bands are noted here demographically. And then with trend data over the years with the all students group. And then gap wise again, here are our racial gaps. And then our other demographic gaps. And you'll, I'll go back one. You'll see here, the only increase in gap was with our multirace group in, in this, on this slide. And here, our only increase was with our students with disabilities, with students without disabilities. The rest either stayed equal or dropped in their, in their gap. And then regionally, everybody comparably saw growth from the smallest growth amount was one point to the largest was seven points with math pass rates.
Pass rates, not the growth rates.
Not the, this is just pass rates. So we're, we're trying to focus when we look regionally on our pass rates. And then here again is the, kind of the heat map for the Commonwealth. Then the next subject for accreditation is science. So our annual pass rates, we saw a nice increase here from 47 to 55% with our annual pass rates, 8%. And then here is the breakdown demographically. And every group saw increases in their pass rate.
Yeah.
And grade level, same thing. Every grade level saw increases in their pass rate. And then the SOA, remember, there's no growth for science. So SOA will just, there's a, you know, if students, you know, weren't enrolled for the whole year, and they took the exam and they failed, they, they get taken out. There's some smaller calculations here that, but there's no growth that's included. And then here is our, our proficiency bands again for science. And trend data over the years.
I have a question. Oh, it's, I think it's on the next slide. Yeah.
And now here is our pass rates across the comparable divisions. And you'll see that we had the highest growth rate across all the divisions. And everybody saw growth from either two points to eight points.
Right. I just wanted to comment on this one, because this one did have the highest amount of growth.
Correct.
Which you can backtrack it and see it in the preliminary data.
Correct.
That you had showed with everyone. What was the year that we, almost all school divisions saw a big dip in science though?
With the new standards, yeah.
Well, there was a year, and I didn't, I thought it was, maybe it was before COVID, but I thought there was a year when, like, everything just, like, dropped dramatically and.
I would have to look.
Okay.
Kristin Dino.
Something they changed the test.
Two years ago, so not last year's data, but the year before that, there was the whole.
For the post-COVID, but I'm not, I, I would have to look at the data to see if there was like a couple of years before COVID.
Okay.
Sometimes when there's a change in the assessment.
Yeah.
Then we see dips in, in what's going on. And, and like what Ms. Pessine said earlier, I would expect when the state puts a new accreditation model in place, you know, we're not sure what it's going to look like with that as well. And, and you know, new math standards going to place next year, not this year. So then there will be a new assessment. So all those is where we see kind of a little change in the, in the formula. Here, I did want to point out, I, I did count this up, and I want to make sure I'm right. And this is where I'm, I'm, why I love my script. So in science, just want to make sure I'm right here. There are only nine divisions across the entire state that showed higher growth than we did in Norfolk. So I think that's pretty impressive.
That's great.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So there's only nine divisions that are darker green than we are. There are a few that showed the same growth, but the rest did not show the same growth as we did in science. And, and we, we still have a ways to go, but we showed some great growth last year, and, and I, we're continuing with that focus. Thank you.
Very good. Very good.
So we also added the performance levels. We haven't done this previously, because usually the data, we're really tight on the data. And like the CCCRI, the official date was the third where we're supposed to pull that report. It turns out our data was right on point. So by the time, because we had to do the presentation upload on Friday. But we, we did add chronic absenteeism, GCI dropout rate, because they're all part of accreditation. So we just felt it was important to do it at this point when we're doing the accreditation process, our, our presentation. And this shows our breakdown for our level one, two, and three for these areas. And like Dr. Birdsong said before about CCCRI gets confusing. All these get a little bit more confusing when you look at the red, yellow, and green, because it's not like a 75%, 70%, you know, it, it changes a little bit. So you might want to just print this slide out for your reference and just keep it in a notebook. So you, you have it if you need it. Looking first at our chronic absenteeism by subgroup, you'll see that we saw improvements across the board. In fact, we dropped by 4.1%, which is, which is good. It, it's, it's the right movement. We need to be below that 15% line. And we're, we're on, on, on track to getting in that direction. And with the work that we're doing this year on attendance, I, I believe we're, we're going to hit that mark. Graduation completion index by, and diploma type. So the, the GCI is what accreditation is based off of. So you'll see, we, we, coming back from COVID, we've had some declines in our GCI. And that was also noted on the document Dr. Birdsong held up earlier. You can see it by high school there as well. And then the pie chart looks at the diploma types for the all students group right now. And then I'm going to go into the, the demographic breakdown. But you can see 45.2% earned a standard diploma and 35.3 in advanced diploma for last year's graduating class. That data is broken down a little bit more here for you for diploma type. The gray boxes on the top signify what the diploma type is. So you can see the total standard diplomas, we had 813. And then demographically, they're broken down below. So 1.1% of those were Asian, 67% were black, 10.6 Hispanic, and on down the line there. Career, the CCCRI index, this is our first year for it. You'll see our, our all students group was at 75.2% as we reported earlier. And then you can see where it's broken down demographically. And to give you a visual, I, I tried to put the red, yellow, and green in the background of the, the performance level indicator for that specific area. And then again, like you spoke to earlier, one of the important things to measure is school by school, and that's on the, that large report. Gives each school's breakdown on that. But this is compiled internally, so we have a division average as well. And then additional uploaded data. We, we did upload by school, by subject area score band. So you can see the pass advanced, pass proficient on there. And we can start monitoring that a little bit more closely. Then we also did it division wide by subject by grade level. So you can see that as well in, in the different ways. And as you're familiar with, so I won't go into much detail, we have a million and three tables up there for you to have for your data. And I, I'll say, since we've started doing this, those are in the front pocket of my, I take them with me everywhere. I learned that from someone in this room. I'm not going to say who. And then last but not least, has, has become one of my favorite documents to have as well. And, and I, I would remiss, be remiss if I didn't say, the, the arduous task that ARA takes on to really compile this for us. And, and Chris McGarry is here tonight with us as well, who, who leads a lot of this work in collaboration with that whole team. But our data is really on point. And, and I think as a board, it's important to know how hard that is. But when we come back, and we are so close, and the only difference has really turned out to be our VAP scores, which we didn't have anyway, that's great work. So.
Thank you.
Yay.
And that's as quick as I can do accreditation update for you.
Not that we were trying to.
No, no, of course not. But we want to stay on time.
Do we have any questions for him, Dr. Paul?
Good job.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Paul.
My pleasure.
Go ahead.
And we'll, so we won't do the update on the strategic plan. You have that report.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, let's see, school board monitoring calendar.
Yes. So we uploaded that as a sample. I think, Mr. Jordan, when we started this work with the goals, you made the request that we come back with a draft. And so that, that's our first stab at a draft of that monitoring calendar.
Okay. How would you like the feedback? Is there, is there any quick feedback right now? Or do you want?
I'll, I'll email it.
Thank you.
All right. We'll take emails. All right. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'm going to excuse myself for follow-up.
All right. Thank you. And then Dr. Paul for policy review?
All right. Good afternoon again. Today, we have updates on five policies. Policy GBEC, it's tobacco products and nicotine. It just has a cross-reference. Policy JCC is school attendance. I do want to point this out to you. Has updates pertaining to a new Virginia code that went into effect on July 1, which we are already monitoring and taking care of. But the policy now allows for students who reside on a military installation or in military housing within the division to enroll in any school upon the request of their parent, as long as there's space available. And this amendment also defines what a military installation is. GEA is compulsory attendance, which includes several minor language changes, as well as adding a 15-day filing period. If a student is transferred into the division and has court orders for an alternative placement, they have 15 days to appeal that replacement to the superintendent or their designee. And it also adds that reports from the state register are the vital records and health statistics. They make lists of students who are not enrolled and who may not be exempt from school. When those are received, we have five days within receiving the reports to investigate those cases as well. JEC, a lot of minor language changes as well. And this is updates to regarding children of certain federal employees to enroll if the student's intended permanent address is within the division's zone. So when they get orders, they can enroll in, even if they don't have permanent housing yet. They have up to 120 days to give us the, their permanent housing proof at that point, or else we could charge them tuition at that point. If they move within the 120 days, we, we don't back charge them tuition for it. So if they ended up not moving to Norfolk, and they moved to Chesapeake per se, we wouldn't charge them for coming to school as long as they're re-enrolling in Chesapeake at that point. JC, JHCD is about administering medicines. And the only addition here is that any athletic trainer under contract with the school division is able to administer a butleral inhalers in valved holding chambers, as well as a school nurse. So that takes care of our after-school athletics programs. And those are the five policies.
Any questions? Go ahead, Tanya.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you and then Noel.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Dr. Paul. I have a question about policy JCC. Can you remind me again, so this policy was originally different from this, from, why, why was it a Z policy to begin with?
So.
Before, so that was one, one question I have.
Pause. I don't have the variances as to why it was a Z policy to begin with. The only thing that was changed to it, though, was to update it to match the code that's required.
Okay. So currently matches the code.
The, the, the red portion is, it was VSBA recommended to match the code that was put into place July 1.
Okay.
None of the other policy changed away from what we've had, because there were no other changes that needed to be made to it.
Okay. So, okay.
And I'll, I will, I will.
Can you go?
Reference this, and I'll look and see if it still needs to be a Z policy.
Okay.
And, and, and determine that as well.
Because at one point, we were trying to align and get rid of.
Correct.
All of that. But as far as, so, as far as the substance within the policy, however, so we have an out-of, out-of-district policy as well. And so I would also cross-reference that policy with this one, because I know military families often, sometime they look at that policy as well, when they're coming into the district for information. And cross-reference, you know, this policy with that policy as well.
Okay.
Yeah, like both, yeah.
I got you.
Because when they're looking for information. And then does this, and I guess at some point, whenever we get, when we have that conversation about out-of-district transfers and that policy and that mechanism, I think to include this along with that would be helpful to me. Does any leased, I have another question, any leased facility, does that include, I mean, I was looking at the definition of it. And that wouldn't include a home, does it? Because I know.
No, this would be leased, this would be leased by the military.
Leased by the military.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So if they, let's say they didn't have enough housing on base, and they leased a, a hotel that had been closed, that's just not on the base.
Okay.
That leased property would be considered base housing for them.
Okay. Not like a family who's renting, like a leased.
No, because then they're no longer on base housing.
Because they're no longer, okay.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
That they're on the waitlist, right? Is that what we talked about?
That's the other policy.
Okay. So that's something else. Okay.
Spazin, I was going to comment a couple of things on the out-of-district. You do not have a general.
You do not have a general out-of-district transfer policy. You do have a couple of specific policies that are cross-referenced here.
Yes, I saw that.
Coming out of some of the concerns about an out-of-district policy, I asked Ms. Hamlin to provide me with copies of what you do have and also forms that are used, which there is no real policy governing for out-of-district transfers. And my offices, Heather Kelly of my office has been assigned to look at all that. And I've kind of given her background of some of the issues that have come up with regard to them with the idea of, at some point, giving me some general ideas for a possible policy that I could talk to the board about in a closed session and then assigning that to the policy committee to flesh out so that you would have in the future, an out-of-district transfer policy that would cover all the different categories. But right now, all you have are the ones listed in the cross-reference here. You have one involving transfers of students with, that are victims of crime, and one regarding transfers from students in persistently dangerous schools.
Okay. Are you, because we have policy JCA, out-of-district transfers. Am I, has that been?
I don't believe that that is. I'm not sure what the details are on that, but it is not the kind of overarching policy that you're thinking of.
Okay.
Because I hadn't, I took a look at what Ms. Hamlin sent me, and it didn't appear that you had one that addresses such things as just where an ordinary parent, for whatever reason, having nothing to do with, with any kind of public safety issue, wants their child to go to another school and how you.
Right.
You treat those and, you know, how you, you know, grant some and not necessarily grant others.
Right. Well, yeah, and I guess that's exactly my point because this one doesn't have any of that information in it. So if one were to go, like, because I, this is the one that I have found when people have come to me, and I look it up, and I, I find this. So parents have found this. So there's nothing here. So that's why, if you could just look into whether, this is an old policy, and it's still on our, in our manual. It's 1993.
This, the one that's here tonight is essentially just.
Yeah.
By federal law, you have had to put this in there. Because federal law now requires these distinctions.
Yeah. I understand, I understand that. But do you understand what I'm saying, though? I'm just saying, if this is outdated, then we either need to repeal it and, yeah, just need to.
I just, for clarity, you're talking about the GCA one being repealed?
I, I'm just, I'm not.
No, I'm trying to understand.
I'm not suggesting that, but I'm.
That's the one you're talking about.
I'm talking about that policy because I know people, when they're looking for information about, sometimes they go to this policy when they're looking for the policy that we're talking about right now. So when I'm talking about cross-referencing both so that whether they come here first or that one, they can find both. That's all I'm saying. Yeah. But go ahead.
I just add, because I, where I thought you were going, so on the JCC policy that has the clause in it about unless special permission is granted by pupil personnel, I'm guessing that might be where the Z came from, but.
Yeah.
There is no, there is no regulation.
Right.
So I think that's, that's the issue that I was seeing, that it references in the policy that pupil personnel can grant this permission. But there's no, at least I don't see one, a JCC-r that spells that out. And I think that's where these questions come up because under Student Support Services, they have this, this system that they're using. And I think part of what we were trying to figure out is where that came from.
And what I'm saying is that I think there is nothing really, there are practices, but there's never been any.
Right.
Guidance from the board as to, you know. And, and it could well be that it might not necessarily require an additional policy so much as a regulation, but it would still be a formal one, you know, promulgated by the superintendent, shared with the board, and the board would be agreeable with. And so right now, I'm working up to the point of, of bringing something to the board just for the purpose of then, you know, sending it on to the policy committee to work out the details and get something in actual writing that we can then consider.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr., or Mr. Cloud. Dr. Phil, go ahead. Do you have anything else?
No, we're gone.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I just ask one. So just for understanding, these are to be voted on at the October business meeting.
Correct. And I'll look into the JCC, and if there's a need to pull it, I'll talk with Dr. Birdsong, and we'll decide that, to see if there need to be changes. To update cross-reference, then we just delay it.
Although, I didn't, wasn't sure if you confirmed what it was, or not, not really.
You're talking about procedures? The procedures versus the policy related to what we're talking about?
Well, never mind. You, you could just look into it, yeah, and then, and then come back, yeah. All right? Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. All right, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Well, Dr. Martin.
Yes.
I just want to be sure, do we have.
Three of six.
I just want to be sure we have enough.
Me, four of six.
I know, she stepped out to the bathroom.
I mean, I just want to be sure she's not leaving. That's all.
Ms. Moore Buffalo, you're there, right?
Oh, that's right, Ms. Moore Buffalo.
Yeah.
She'll, we'll have a quorum.
Okay. I don't know, she's.
She wanted to go see if, if Dr. Gabriel was gone.
A motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin.
Do I get a second?
A second.
Okay. I'm going to be too, too, but I appreciate that, Ms. Buffalo. Ms. Tanner, please call the motion, or read the motion, sorry.
Yes. Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amendment four, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A29 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is to discuss the procurement and contract, and contracting of a firm to review and advise the board regarding various administrative functions and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A8 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the closed session is for legal advice regarding the matter set above in subsection A of this motion. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Okay, we're gone. Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.